You all are probably aware that the council just finished a special session. And so we're just waiting for two of our counselors to return. Life happens, right?
You all are probably aware that the council just finished a special session. And so we're just waiting for two of our counselors to return. Life happens, right?
Yes.
You all are probably aware that the council just finished a special session. And so we're just waiting for two of our counselors to return. Life happens, right?
Yes.
I'm jumping to the next. All right, so sorry, we have to adjourn from our special work session. So could I get a motion to adjourn from the earlier special work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, oh, roll call, please.
It's just a voice motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, we are back to May 21st, 2024. Our Iowa City Work Session, I'm going to call this to order. And the first item is the special presentation, American Public Works Association Top Ten Public Works Leaders of the Year Award Presentation. And I'm going to ask that our city manager Jeff Fronstein start us off.
I'm even more excited than you, Mayor. This is really a special evening for us and a special recognition for Ron Kenney, who was recently named a 2024 Top Ten Public Works Leader of the Year by the American Public Works Association. So a little bit, little bit about Ron here. Ron has served with the city for 25 years. He joined the city as a civil engineer in 1999, was promoted to senior engineer in 2001, and to city engineer in 2003. And in 2015, Ron was promoted to public works director, where he oversees engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water. That's a lot. A lot of oversight there. And while those are his official duties, Ron does so much more for this organization. He's a trusted advisor to many of us, known for calm demeanor, rational thinking and analysis, no matter what the circumstances are, no matter how contentious something may be or controversial. Can always count on Ron to help you navigate that. He's always respectful in dialogue and is grounded in public service and is doing what is best for this community. So Ron was a graduate of the University of Iowa, a civil engineering degree. And just this past year, he also won the Alumni Service Award from the College of Engineering, which is another amazing honor for Ron. At any given time, Ron and his staff are balancing well over 100 projects in this community. And at the same time, they're dealing, they're delivering exceptionally high-level services to our residents and businesses. But Ron is much more than a project manager or someone that delivers services. He's a dynamic leader that we are so fortunate to have here in Iowa City. And I just want to mention one thing about Ron that above all other things that I really admire about him, and that's how much he cares for his staff. When I talk to Ron, he is frequently bragging about his staff and proud of the accomplishments. He's constantly having conversations about professional development of his staff and improving the work environment for his staff and the resources that they have to do their job. Example number one, just last weekend, we had a public work open house at our wastewater. This is an annual event that Ron really brought to the city to highlight a lot of the unseen work done by the great employees on our team. So we were out at wastewater celebrating that facility and all the employees that deliver those services to the community. So as you can see, Ron has a lot of support here, family, friends, professional colleagues, staff, both former and current. He's admired by many, and we couldn't be more proud to have Ron on our team and have him recognized for his efforts here tonight. So I would like to ask that Keith Pugh from the American Public Works Association to come up and tell us a little bit more about this award. And Keith, thanks for joining us all the way from Greenville, Tennessee.
Yes.
We appreciate you being here.
Welcome and good to see you.
Thank you.
So a funny thing happened on the way. It's always good to start off with this kind of conversation. I was working on this presentation on the plane without realizing that without internet connection, anything I tried to save was not going to save. So I wrapped up my comments and I was pleased with that, closed my computer up. When I got back into hotel room, I opened it up, and the old version of my comments was sitting there. So I've tried to recreate this the best I can, and kind of like Public Works, we, we kind of have to be resilient, we have to adapt and, and change. Good afternoon. Certainly a privilege to be with you today. I have had the privilege of spending some time in Iowa over the past couple of years, and I must say that all my travels here, I have been pleasantly greeted and welcomed, and my stays here have always been, I've, I've felt like I'm home when I come here. So it's, it's always a pleasure to come here. My name is Keith Pugh. I am the immediate past president of the American Public Works Association, and that is the national association. APWA is made up of more than 32,000 public works professionals from across North America, US, Canada, and indeed from around the world. It is no coincidence that I am with you today during National Public Works Week. The theme for this year is advancing quality of life for all, or as we affectionately call it, a Quaafa. Boy, isn't that catchy? Advancing quality of life for all, and that is what we strive to do every day. An integral part of APWA's celebration of National Public Works Week is the announcement of the Top Ten Public Works Leaders of the Year. The Top Ten program began in 1960, so we're 64 years into this. The purpose of the Top Ten Public Works Leader of the Year Award is to inspire excellence and dedication in public service by recognizing the outstanding achievements of public works professionals. This award was established again over 60 years ago, and it provides an opportunity for APWA to single out 10 individuals each year who represent the absolute finest in the public works profession. You do not have to be an APWA member to win this award. So 32,000 membership, but we draw from the entire population. The Top Ten are selected by five past Top Ten recipients. The Top Ten Award is given for exemplary public works performance, not for service to the association or the chapters. Since its founding in 1937, APWA has had 88 different national presidents. Forty-five of them have been Top Ten Public Works Leaders of the Year. The Top Ten is also a lifetime achievement award. It is not for a specific year, it is for a career dedicated to public service. And it's those folks who have spent years of dedicated exemplary service to both the profession and to their communities. You know, I woke up, I woke up this morning in Maryville, Tennessee, and this recognition is certainly important enough for me to travel here to recognize Ron today personally. Friends and colleagues of Ron Kenney, describe him with few words, but let me tell you what some of those words are. Perseverance, integrity, strength, resolve, vision, passion, honesty, mentor, caring, collaborative, approachable, respected, dedicated, loyal, all of which are great qualities to have in any, any individual. And to have all of those wrapped up into one is truly special. You know, I read through Ron's nomination package for this award and this recognition, and his personal accomplishments are far too many for me to even begin to summarize. I would encourage you to go back and take a look at that nomination package. It's, it's quite impressive. His contributions to the industry, his dedication to his family, his tireless efforts to improve the quality of life for everyone in the community. And what that does is it brings me to a realization that Ron's father probably instilled in him the same values that my father instilled in me. My dad was always about public service, a service to his community, trying to leave things better than he found them. And he and my mother modeled that out in everything they did in their life, and they left very big shoes for me to try to fill. And apparently, I believe Ron has done the entire thing throughout his service here in Iowa City and with the county where he was previously. So it is with great pleasure that I get to recognize Mr. Ron Kenney as an APWA Top Ten Public Works Leader of the Year.
Please share some words.
I will. Jeff and Keith, thank you for the kind words and taking the time out of your busy schedules today to, to be with us. And there are many people that I must thank for helping me achieve this prestigious award. I'd like to start with the individuals that have had the greatest impact on my professional career. My journey in public work started by working summers on a survey crew in Cedar County Secondary Roads Department. Bonnie Sawyer encouraged me to apply, and Mark Dara took a chance on a chemical engineering student. This grew into a full-time position after graduation. Carol Ash, Jerry Droll, and Jack Grabbert helped me develop into the leader that I am today. My predecessors, Rick Foss and Chuck Schmedeke, who laid the groundwork for the Public Works Department, 160 members of the Public Works team, your professionalism is second to none. Thanks to the Public Works Management Team, Tony Davis, Jason Havel, Scott Silvers, Dan Striegel, Bill Zabonic, Brock Hall, Dave Gillum, Jennifer Jordan, Mike Edwards, Jason Eckrich, Jonathan Durst, Michael Willis, Tim Wilkie, and Stephen Flake. You make my job easy. Your dedication to Iowa City is greatly appreciated. Thank you to Tom Marcus and Jeff Ruin for your support and trusting me as your Public Works Director. The city management team, there is no one else that I would want to be on this journey with. To my public work family across the state of Iowa, thank you for your support and allowing me to represent you at the national level. And none of this would be possible without the love and support of my family. Thank you to my mother and father, Pam Stoltenberg and Ben Kenney, my brother Tom, my stepfather, Rick Stoltenberg, my mother-in-law, Deb Peterson, and my late father-in-law, Dennis Peterson. These are people who taught me the value of service to family and community. My daughters Emily, Anna, and Olivia, who have been, have given me opportunities to give back to the community through their involvement, and most importantly, my wife DeNoe. Without her love and support, I would not be in front of you today. Mr. Mayor and Council, it's truly my honor and privilege to serve you and the Iowa City community as your Public Works Director. Although it's my name on the award, this has been a group effort many years in the making. I am humbled to represent this community, the state of Iowa, and the public works profession at the national level as a member of the 2024 Top Ten Public Works Leaders. Happy National Public Works Week.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know what's in the water in Iowa, but I do feel compelled to share this with you as well. I think Iowa has had 12 Top Ten Public Works Leaders of the Year
Wow.
in the last 12 years. I think you've had one each year. So whatever good is happening here, keep it going.
All right. Thank you. And congratulations again for all of your work from the council. We really do appreciate, and we see all that you do. So thank you so much. Yes.
Now you guys can go celebrate.
Yes, it is celebration time, so feel free to just exit at this time. Yes. It'll be half of our audience.
May I jump into one and then?
Sure.
Always nice to prove I was actually there.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
And Jeff, will you join us?
Yes.
Squeeze in and we'll... Okay, everybody ready? Three, two, one, look at me. Fantastic.
Good job.
Good job, Ron.
All right. And we're going to move on to item number two, which is the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission Presentation. And we have the chair joining us, Chastity. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you all for having me. I guess I first, I should probably bring up our item first. There it is. Here we go. Hi again. Again, thank you so much for having me here. My name is Chastity Dillard. I'm serving as the Chair of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I'm joined by my fellow commissioners who are going to join us, join me in this conversation as well. I'm excited to be here again. I know we spoke a month ago, finishing up our, our seven months with our facilitators, but now we're back to talk about the next steps and our plans for the future. So... I'm just going to take a breath because just breathing really hard right now. Okay, so again, I'm here to talk about our updates and also to talk about and continue our partnership with the city council. As you may know, we did send in a request in January asking for additional funds so that we can complete our mission to serve this community. And right now, we're going to just share with you what our plans are. So just to back up why we are here, we're here to talk about how to eradicate systemic racism in our community and, you know, the wider community as well. So just to remind us, the definition of systemic racism is institutional racism, also known as systemic racism, is defined as policies and practices that exist throughout a whole society or organization that result in and support a continued unfair advantage to some people and unfair or harmful treatment of others based on race or ethnic groups. As we spent the last 10 months just learning more about what it means to develop a Truth and Reconciliation Commission and group for this community, we have learned so much about what needs to happen moving forward. So for the next few months, this month through September, we have several different areas we wanted to focus on. For this first instance, we have been focusing on social justice, which was the law enforcement. We've identified affordable housing, economic development, and education as areas of interest. We do, as we said before, understand that there's tons of different areas of interest that we could focus on, but there's not enough time to focus on all of those. But we have heard from the community, and these are the ones that were expressed as the higher point of interest. With these areas of interest, we are hoping to, in the next four months, sit down with the community and do community projects that could be a public, those could be public presentations, working with groups like an educators work group, housing work groups, social justice work groups, small business groups, anything that our community members have already identified and will identify in the coming, coming months. Also during this time, we, we've learned that we can't do anything correctly if we don't continue to gain knowledge on what the issues are in this community. So using those same four areas, we want to, and we will engage with experts in this community to come in and give us, give us more information about what's going on in these different areas, as well as educate the public as well. So we want to consult with experts to better understand how these four systems work and identify changes to city goals, policies, and procedures that increase community engagement. The next part of that is community engagement projects, still in those same areas, developing projects that look and work different ways with Iowa City citizens to help solve community problems. Those could be meetings, symposiums, conferences, work groups, just diving in and really being led by the community and having people join us on this endeavor. And then after we've done all those items, Phase Four, which is September through December, we have, we will have finally solidified our model, which is developing our story. You'll see on this slide that we go from learning from experts, doing fact finding, using the subject matter experts and some more truth telling from that, but also inviting the community and to tell their truths, whether that's in person or in the public forum that we made an example of in March, and doing, from those testimonials and all those other activities, doing some reconciliation work, whether that could be another strategic doing session, the healing circles or other projects that come up as we continue working with the community, and then review. And then we have the arrows because you have to rinse and repeat, because we won't be done with this, because we're going to learn and grow as people become more and more comfortable with the process. And then by the end of December, we will have our final reports with our final recommendations to, to hand over to you all. I'm going to invite my fellow commissioners to come and introduce themselves and just share their experience, but before I do that, I wanted to say that as we are city officials, but we're also citizens first here, and just remind you that we truly believe in this project and this idea, not as something that ends in December, but something that needs to live on for decades to come. This is the foundation that we're building, and we need your help to make sure that we can continue doing the work that you all decided in 2020 that this needed to be done. So I hope that you will hear our, our plea for partnership, and pray that you eventually come to a decision to help us move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and the other council members, all of you. I'm excited to be here, especially when we learned that you could allow to hear from us on a short notice. That made me very happy, because we are struggling in some areas, but we are very positive because we are moving in the right direction according to the mandate that you gave us. My name is Em, so I'm sorry, Commissioner Emos Kitcher. So I just wanted to add to what my fellow commissioner has said. We have reached a point where all that you gave us, we have chewed on and has produced good results to us. We have a lot of information right now with us that we want to work on, but we have limitations. All the consultants are gone right now. So we are just hanging on our own, struggling with the training that they gave us, which we really appreciated for you to have funded their training. They made us learn what sorts of information we need, how to collect the information, they all... They also trained us on how to, the community can talk to us in the form of truth telling, hearing different voices, and the commission really appreciates that. We have been able to listen to a lot of people. There are still a lot of voices that we want to hear, especially on the area of public safety and law enforcement. But we believe we've really collected enough information that can help us, help the city, help our community and ourselves as community members to move ahead. We are really excited with good information. What we now lack is a facilitator. And this one, I'm gonna be very blunt because ourselves, we can't do this on our own. You allocate us $10,000 to usually use on our daily operations, renting food and other things. That cannot cover a facilitator. So, the budget we are gonna present to you very soon, which we think we'll talk about that, talk about the need for that. And we'll also talk about the need for some seed money on top of the $10,000 that you usually give us. And it's gonna be some amount there that is probably, I think you are aware of, and is gonna help us hire somebody who can help us. Other facilities, especially in data analysis, report writing, processing the information. We are not, all the commissioners here are trained in different areas, but we have other things to do. We can't do it very well when we don't have all these facilities. I can even ask now, we might need an office somewhere where I can walk in as a commissioner, talk to another commissioner, and let's work on these documents and something like that. So, these are just things that we're gonna show up in the, our budget. The other area that I think is, I wanna talk about is on the budgeting process, the philosophy budgeting process that you are usually used, you're usually, usually used to hard numbers, explain to the last dollar. The task you gave us is kind of very difficult, complex, fluid. Sometimes you think it's gonna be like this, but it's never like that. Most of the things, the voices, we think we want to work on, we learn as we go. So, we, we are always handicapped in terms of writing that nice business school budget plan that you guys are used to. So, we are just asking you to be a little bit accommodative when we present our budget and things don't look like they are fitting your, what you are used to daily. But we will try our best. We are learning, there's no theory about this that we can learn from any book anywhere. Yeah, this is something that we never learned in school, but we learn as a group, the whole team. So, that's an area we want you to be accommodating on. And that, then, the third area I wanna talk to is when we reach the budget, the implementation stage, seed grants for doing some of the community projects. We do not have a framework. The mandate you gave us did not talk about any framework. Maybe that is to our advantage, but I'm not sure. We might reach a problem where we reach conflicts in the commission, like how do we locate this money? Those ones probably, according to me as a commissioner, but I think other commissioners, we will talk about this, will want to know whether our hands are tied in certain areas in allocating the funds in the budgets and all the process that you want us to go through. And thank you very much. That's what I can talk about right now. Thanks. I really appreciate.
Thank you. All right. Great. Welcome.
Welcome. Lou Tassinari. I'm gonna talk a little bit more from the 30,000-foot level. And what I wanna express is I was struggling with, why is this whole process so important? We know it's difficult. We know we've all spent a lot of effort on this, and why is it so important? And as I was struggling with that, I was reminded that about 35 years ago, I was here in Iowa City, finishing up at the University of Iowa as a research scientist, and a movie came out. Do the Right Thing. It changed my life watching that movie. It was an incredible movie. It was particularly inspired by the Howard Beach incident three years earlier and the untimely death of Michael Griffith. Fast forward to 2020. We have the tragic deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. And it motivates everybody. Everyone has the right instincts here in Iowa City, and you all have the right instincts. And you say, let's do the TRC. And as I worked with that analogy, I was thinking, what is it about the title of that movie? Because, and I looked around, and people struggle with that. What does that title mean? And the, the one thing that came, that struck, that stuck with me was that without discussion, we can never overcome social issues and divides. And so, I wanna unpack that even a little further, specifically within the context of the TRC. That without systematic and ongoing difficult dialogues enabled by critical thinking and informing actual policy, there will be no real progress. We will fast forward again 35 years, and there'll be more tragic killings. So, what we're doing here is really important, and I know you all recognize that. And in order for us to continue, we need support to do that. You've given us some support, and it's worked out great with the consultants and all the rest, but to move forward, to really do this, and to solidify it, and to have it be something that is part and parcel of city government moving forward, how do we, as Chastity put up there, how do we change policies to prevent the continuation of systemic racism and allow the community to trust again? It takes time, it takes effort, it takes money, and we're all here to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner.
Good evening. All right, my name is Chad Simmons, and I appreciate that you all giving us time to be able to talk. Couple of questions I'd like to ask before I start giving my presentation. I'd like for this to really be a conversation from citizen to citizen, and would prefer to be able to use your first name versus to be able to use your formal name, if that's acceptable. I don't want to offend, but to me, this is important.
I'll just let you know that my ancestors just, they are excited in the grave when they can hear that I'm addressed as Mayor Teague. So, I, I'd like to be addressed as Mayor Teague.
Understand, Mayor.
Yes.
And I will address you accordingly.
Thank you.
Mayor Teague, May 25th is coming up. What is your plans for May 25th?
It's my mother's birthday. No, not May 25th, sorry. But, no, go right ahead.
Well, it's also the day, four years from this Saturday was when, oh, four years from this Saturday was when Mr. Floyd was murdered and lost his life. Four years. He lost his life for many reasons. One was is that his fellow officers were not willing to step in and tell him that he was doing wrong. And they should be accountable for that. But what I was really more interested in at the time was the people that were watching the police officer do what he did to this young man. Putting his knee and foot on his neck and his back and taking his life. And Sean, there may be the question that you would ask was, why is that interesting? And the reason why it's interesting to me is, is that only thing that someone had to do was go to the police officer and push him off. But the reason why it didn't happen, Andrew, it didn't happen because they knew that if they were to approach the police, that they would have to give up their life for his life. That the decision that they had to make was whether their life was more valuable to their family versus his. And they made a decision that instead of them dying, that he had to die. And for the whole, the rest of their lives, they will have to question whether that really made sense. And that's a very deep burden to bear, to carry when you watch a man die. Those things are very challenging. But one of the things that they learned is that spectators never win. You can sit on the sidelines, and you can do absolutely nothing, and then you have to deal with the consequences of doing nothing. But what happened, all across the country, people raised up and raised up to address the issue about systemic racism, about being in situations where they have more control. And in Iowa City, they were willing to give up their freedoms, they were willing to give up their lives by doing things who were crazy, like going out into the highway and stopping traffic, because they would prefer to die free than to live in a life where they were fearful for their whole life. They made the decision that they were gonna focus on doing what was right for the community, even if it meant that it wasn't gonna be right for them. In essence, what they learned was the reason of what Do the Right Thing was all about. But now, we're here. In January, we asked you for $250,000. We did that because we knew that there was community things that we needed to do, and you all were silent. You said nothing to us. We continue to be able to do the work while you are watched. We appreciate the investment of the $400,000 that you have put into this project. We believe that the time of all of the, the commissioners that we put in, we believe all of that time was worth more than $400,000. So, we even there. But it gets to a point that you have to understand that the work you're doing is not, in essence, to focus on paying commissioners, it's to focus, again, on community. What we can do, in essence, to achieve our goal with the community. We have approximately seven months to continue the work. But this is now in your hands. This is a decision, Josh, that you have to make. And we know you weren't on the council when the decision was made, but this is the decision that you have to make, which is what's more important? Is community mission more important, or consultants and money more important? You can stand in the bleachers and watch the commission die by not approving the request that we gave you. You can easily do that. For me, it would mean that you're giving up on the community that you swore that you would be here to support. But what we're asking you as fellow citizens, that we're coming up with a model that allows community to help community solve problems versus to help city solve problems for us. And that's where we need your help. Remember, spectators never win. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Is it possible for us to ask a question?
Absolutely.
Hi. And this can be for any commissioner. Thank you very much for, you know, the, the presentation as well as sort of the, the vision that you have and, and a roadmap for the next seven months. I perhaps erroneously didn't understand the, the work session topic today, and so I just wanna ask a, a few questions that have to do with the work that you've been doing. In, in multiple sections, there's been references to, we have collected a lot of information, and we are ready to move on it. I would dearly love to know what some of the specifics are. What have, what have you learned? I, I have to admit that I thought that this would be sort of a report out on, now that we have done this work, these are the elements. And I do understand the high level of housing and social justice and economic development, education, as well as then the form that moving forward can take. So, I greatly appreciate that the work that you've been doing now is moving forward, but I would love to know, especially tied to talking about the definition of institutional racism, in order that we, as policymakers, can, can start to chew on some of the information that you have gathered already to help us be able to, to, to understand the next steps better.
So, the, the money that you gave us was not for the actual project. The money you gave us was for the vehicle. So, let's just say we're taking a trip, and we're gonna take a trip to Florida. Right?
Right. I, I just wanna know some of the, the specific takeaways that, that you have had from the learning that you have, you said that you've learned.
Right. I was just trying to explain it. I'm sorry. If you, you want me to skip more directly to the point?
Take whatever path you want.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, the, the goal was is that we had, we were working on the vehicle, we were working on ways of how we can engage in it with the community. And all the consultants were around what the vehicle should look like, whether we should be able to, to do things by strategic doing. The purpose of strategic doing is, is how do you get people together to figure out what a master problem is, and then how would they, in essence, work on figuring out that problem? So, we had meetings, we spent a lot of time really trying to be strategic around how we could leverage and use that tool, in essence, so that we could, once we got into the topics, that we could, in essence, be able to address the topics. We learned a lot about fact finding, and what we found out about fact finding was is that, within fact finding, that unless you're very specific about a problem you're trying to solve, that the person who's doing fact finding will give you a whole bunch of information, some of that could be of value, and some of it is not, will not be of value, because it, it doesn't address the, the overall system, it simply gives you information about the environment in which people are operating in. So, for example, we knew that, we got findings about how the city and police operate in comparison to how other communities, how their police operate, the numbers of police that are there, how they address different communities. We got that information. But we didn't get enough information to get to the specifics. But that was fine. We learned about fact finding, and we learned the value, in essence, of fact finding. Then, we got into things around how to make sure that we took care of the people that we were trying to work with. We knew that when you put people in situations, that there's gonna be some trauma, and you want them to be able to share their truths within that, sharing that, that trauma, but you wanna do it in such a way that, in essence, is safe for them. We found out that many of the systems that the city has does not allow there to be safety for individuals, does not give them the ability to be able to share, in essence, their truths in a way that the structure is set up, and that we needed to make sure that we found other ways of being able to gather information so we could gain that information, and then we could then put something from a public perspective that would then be able to share, again, what holistically, what is, what is going on. So, we knew that was, that that needed to, again, happen, and we will still kind of work through that. But what we did, what we were able to do, again, as related to things around trauma, was is that we were allowed, one of our partners, to really talk and work us through a process that allowed us to heal as individuals and heal collectively together. So, what we learned from the sys, what we learned from the vehicle that we put together is, is that we need a vehicle that requires, that allows people to have a level of trust, have a level of confidentiality that they, they, they expect, that we needed to have people involved as relates to, to be able to gather information, and we needed to make sure that we created that in, in such a way that we could communicate it to the public so that they could truly understand what some of the overall issues and the, the challenges were. That's what our goal was, based on what we were able to do around the vehicle. Our challenge was, we were never able to fully control, in essence, every, every aspect of the vehicle.
Thanks. Any other questions by council?
I just have a quick follow-up. Commissioner Kiche, it sounded like from your comments that there would be maybe a budget forthcoming that is something different than just the request for $250,000. Do I understand that correctly? Or what, what is the commission's intention as far as the use of those funds?
What we're doing is, is that we kind of listed holistically what the funds would be used for. What we're doing is we're asking for there to be commitment that their funds are gonna be available to us so that we can then fully develop a plan. We cannot, we don't feel comfortable right now in developing a plan if we don't understand what resources we have. And as of right now, we don't have any resources available to us. And as of right now, we don't have any resources available to us.
So I think I understood the areas of interest that you all are going to be working on. Affordable housing, economic development, education, and social justice, there is still could be some things coming from there. I guess, as far as a budget, like, I don't, in this moment, I don't know what the monies would be used for, even though I know the areas of interest. There has not been any discussion in this meeting today as to what you would do with the money.
So you're absolutely right. What we tried to do was just show you the broader areas. And again, we're more than willing to give you more of the specifics. Where we're looking for, again, assistance on is telling us, again, what monies that we have available to us so that we can then try to develop our plan within that.
Okay. I could appreciate that, although I feel like we would have to know some, we would have to know activities that's going to be done, you know, during this time. So what I would suggest is, at least from my perspective, but, you know, all of council is here, is for you all to have some of those brainstorming sessions as to what you all would like to do with the funds so that the council has some earmarks of, we're going to, you know, spend funds for this, this, and this. In this moment right now, I just don't know what that is.
So Mayor, we just talked just a little bit about the process, right? Anytime that there's money that has to be spent, it ultimately comes to you all. You all have to approve whatever money is being spent. So when we were having the consultants, you all were the ones to sign the letter of that. So the agreement was put together by the city. The council or its representatives ultimately signed it. Nothing that will come through is something, if you don't sign it, then it doesn't happen. So you continue to have the right to be able to approve whatever monies that we use. You have the ability to do that. We're asking for a show of faith that you allow us to be able to do this investment. And here's the other thing, Mayor, and here's our challenge. The time is running out.
Sure.
We've been diligent, we worked hard, we put our effort in. You're going to, you all are going to see everything and approve everything that we do. It's a part of the, that's one of the things we learned in the process, is how things actually get done. They don't get done the way we thought they would get done. They get done a totally different way. But understanding the way the city has it happen is that the city manager and the staff are the ones to review and look at everything, they're the ones to put together the agreements, and then they may consult us, and then they come to you for, in essence, for signature. So we're just simply saying, we're not asking, we're not going to have the ability to just spend crazy. You have to approve everything that we ask to do. And anytime that you and the council, when you review it, if you do not believe that it makes sense, I think you have every right to either turn it down or to, again, to ask us for more questions.
May I ask a clarifying question? So the budget request that is going to be, or is pending, right, submitted to us, just in this conversation, I'm just wondering if I have things correct in my head. Are you guys intending to propose some broad programs or ideas with a dollar amount and request in that way? Or are you more so looking for, how much can we spend? How much will you authorize for us to spend? And then kind of go from there to determine the programming?
So what we've been asking for is the approval to be able to spend the 250,000. What we understand that the process is, is that we ask for the approval, you will say yes or no, give the approval. But anything that comes through that requires an expenditure has to ultimately still be approved to you. You give us a big budget, we have to send everything else directly to you, all the line items and how what our plan is to use, and then you all then approve it. And then, once you approve it, we move forward. If you don't approve it, and let's say, for example, we want to do a housing conference. We want to do a housing conference, we want to do a housing conference, let's say it's in August. We want to invite several people to come and be a part of it. Some are going to be local, some are going to be from other places. We come up with a budget, how we want it to work out, what we think it is. Even if you agree to the 250,000, it still has to come to you as far as the ability to approve the contract or the agreement. So we still don't have the ability, even once you do that, you've just given us your promise that we have the ability to use it, but not your promise that we can spend it any way we want to spend it. We're just asking for the ability to be able to use it.
So again, just to clarify, and I think that that all makes sense, I just want to make sure that what I'm saying and thinking is meshing up, right? You're asking for a dollar amount that we would entertain, that you could then see, okay, this is what we could be potentially working with, and then that you could then bring proposals, more detailed proposals for funding in the future, correct?
The last part would be accurate. The first part is, we made a request for 250,000.
Yeah. And so that's the number, that's the number that you're specifically requesting, that we say, this is what we will entertain. Like, you have a specific amount for what you would like us to entertain, not necessarily a specific budget allocation in a technical sense, until we actually get what you're actually proposing in terms of programming and all that stuff, correct?
That is accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing I'm wondering is, if you don't know what you want to spend the money on specifically yet, how did you get to the quarter million budget ask? Like, where did that, where did that number come from?
Well, we knew what we wanted to spend. When we did our presentation in November, we listed several projects in which we wanted. Those projects ran up to approximately around 150,000. But there was some additional projects that we wanted, but we didn't get a chance to scope out. And there were also projects that, again, that were on that list that we weren't all, we weren't committed yet as a group, that we wanted those specific projects, in essence, to be able to work. So what we were informed, we had a million dollars that was a part of a fund that we would be able to leverage. We used $400,000 of that fund, and we still had available monies to be able to use in that fund. That was what we were informed. But we do, like I said, we do understand, everything has to come through you all, that you all can approve any given project that we put in place. You can say yes or no for this expenditure, and then we will have to follow those rules. But we don't know what to build unless you give us the parameters of what we can build.
What would staff need from council to follow a path like this in terms of, if there's money still in the Black Lives Matter Fund where, that has been carrying over from year to year since that summer of 2020, what would staff need if council was wanting to entertain this request?
Yeah. The Black Lives Matter Fund is not directly tied to the TRC. That's the first thing to be important, to recognize, and that's in the TRC resolution itself. So you're not, you're not committed, you have never committed, this council's never committed to give the TRC a million dollars. What you committed to in that resolution was to provide facilitation services and using those funds, which you did. Staff is not authorized to spend out of that Black Lives Matter Fund. So whatever's not spent on the facilitators would require city council direction. So we would need some type of resolution from you to indicate how you would like to allocate those dollars. As you know, not all expenditures come before you. Our purchasing manual specifies whether a department director or I can sign off on an item, or whether it has to come to you. So if you want to deviate from that process and say, every expenditure that the TRC wants to make needs to come to you, I would caution against that, first of all. But you could direct that, right? If you wanted to alter the purchasing rules for a specific purpose, you could assume more responsibility and oversight of those funds. But we would need a resolution, essentially, to allocate those funds. And we would want to make sure on anything that we sign off on as staff is consistent with what you are thinking. So I'll use the housing conference example. If the housing conference budget's going to be $7,500, that's not normally something that you would have to sign off on. That would be an expenditure level that could be approved by staff. You could allocate the $250,000 for general purposes, and then you could specify that we bring that back to you, even though I normally wouldn't. Or you'd give us, essentially, the authority, the discretion to follow through on that.
So as someone who's been watching this commission since its inception, I know there's been challenges in, like, we want t-shirts, and then they were told, we can't buy t-shirts because there's not a budget that's approved by the city council. I want to avoid that kind of thing. So I guess my question was more like, if, and, you know, I don't even know what the temperature of the council is right now, but if we're inclined to, say, continue your work and we want to provide resources, I understand it doesn't necessarily have to be from that one fund, but what does staff need to hear that direction to be able to carry forward when they come with a request for 7,500 so that it doesn't have to be sort of negotiated every single time?
Well, I think we want to know what that, what that level is because you could have, you know, 10 $7,500 projects, and that adds up a lot. And I want you all to know, you know, know that and be aware of that. What we did with some of the expenses to date that have been outside of the facilitators' contracts was we developed a very general budget, you know, marketing, you know, food, supplies. We put general numbers to those, and we've been using our, essentially, our human rights budget to pay for those. So we have discretionary funds in our human rights budget that we use for all things, not just TRC. As long as it's within those budget parameters that we have spent, then staff will use discretion on how to do that. But again, I wouldn't want to go into that without a common understanding. If the TRC thinks that they're going to have a couple hundred thousand dollars, that's not, we don't have that kind of discretionary budget at the staff level, even though we could authorize a number of smaller purchases. So we tried to, I think we said 10,000? 10,000 was that food and beverage and supplies for some of the meetings and things like that. And, you know, that typically never came to council. That was just, that was just our own expenses. So we could do something similar to say, you know, we'll continue to support, and we can do t-shirts and promotional materials and social media boosts and things like that, at a not-to-exceed of 10 or 15, whatever, you know, we're comfortable in setting. And I think that'll continue to work as it has. It's the bigger item that I think you need to focus on, whether you want to entertain the 200.
And certainly, without wanting to sort of nickel-and-dime projects. As you've said, it's like, it can carry on with these smaller things, but understanding that you want to do more substantive work, I get that. I would definitely, I'm just going to be very transparent, as you have been as well. I would need to know some sense of scope of what the project is. What would, what would a conference look like, right? It could be something that can be put together on a shoestring, or it can be large, and, or it can bring in a nationally renowned, I mean, actually, I'll pull, education. You could bring in a Jennifer Randall who talks about anti-racist, high-stakes assessment, right? And she commands a large prize. But simply to say, I'm in favor of a large-scale project, I really would want to have some contours around it to know what the scope of it is. Otherwise, we are not being good stewards of money for the city and for the community that, in fact, I think of the many ways in which some of these entities that we have been, in other names, in other fashions, been supporting. And I would hate for there to be a large plan that either doesn't come to fruition or things become more expensive as things add on without having considered them first, right? To kind of scope it out, to plan it, to do some budget management or project management, even. I mean, it wouldn't have to be down to the line item, but I would definitely need, for me to be comfortable to say, you want to do something bigger and in this second phase, third phase, fourth phase, right, this larger phase, to say, here is the, here's where we're leading to. For me to feel comfortable to say, okay, here's 75,000, here's 100,000 for this particular project. I need to have some sense of what it is and who you might be entertaining. And so I just have to be transparent about that. Otherwise, this is, I can, you know, we learn from mistakes and perhaps the way of the facilitators before. I know that there's, it was very complicated. And I want you to be able to use the money in the best way possible and to allow you to have a larger runway to be able to plan it. So I understand, it's sort of chicken and egg. But I'm uncomfortable simply saying, here is a large amount of money without knowing any sense of, has there been discussion about what an affordable housing conference would look like? What scope would it be? And it does not need to be down to the Nats eyelash, but simply to say that this is what we are planning on. We've talked to even, like, where it might be held and what their rental fees are, something general, just to show that there's some homework that's been done. So I just had to be, I had to be very transparent since you have as well.
I just wanted to address what you were saying and then turn it back over to my fellow commissioner. But I think, I think I hear what you're saying, Councilwoman Alter. I think as a person, a professional who works in events and planning, it is very difficult to plan or even do the homework, as you're saying, without knowing what the budget is, without knowing what you can reach, what you can reach. I mean, we have done homework. We've thrown out lots of ideas. We've had people look into things. But it gets down to that, to, like you said, are we going to hire someone that is $15,000 or someone local's $500? And so really, what I think we're all saying is, we just need to know what is the dollar amount that is reasonable for us to come to you and so we can do the work. There's a big difference between saying we can do 10,000, 50,000, 100,000, 250,000. So we just need to know what can we work with, and then we can tell you what we can do with that, is what I'm saying. Yeah. So I just...
I just will pick up maybe on some of your thinking and combine some of Counselor Harms and Counselor Alters' thinking here is, I would love if there was a scenario where all of the truth-telling activities that you guys have done came up with a recommendation for something like an event. I don't think that us sort of throwing a number amount at the wall and then saying, okay, now invent an event to fill that money, doesn't make sense to me as much as you have data that you've been collecting by going to these listening posts. And I would, I think we all want to know what that information you've collected exactly is leading towards a specific policy recommendation or a specific investment in a specific group of people, and then we can build around that. But it really feels like we're just throwing stuff at the wall and hoping something sticks, is how it feels right now sitting here?
So I would like to address your issue, and I'm going to address Megan's issue. Then after that, I want to give you my personal thoughts and feelings about this. But from a commission perspective, everything that you said makes sense. The money that we invested is not the money that we necessarily should have invested the way we did to invest it. We tried to get out of it, but we found it very difficult to work, in essence, with the city staff as well as with the city council to get everyone aligned around what we wanted to do. Every time we asked for something, the answer was no. So we can work through that. Now that will become a part of our report, if there's a possibility of doing a report. What you're saying makes a lot of sense if we have the time. As we start having only seven months, we lose less of the time, especially during election time. We even lose more of that because November is pretty much dead, right? And is anyone that listened to us during Christmas while they're eating turkey? So December is pretty much dead. So really, our object, our goal is we have to get this done in a very short period of time to do all of that. So we understand, everything that you're saying makes sense. It is reasonable to say, hey, put a plan together, and then a plan that we'll approve it and then we'll move forward. That's reasonable. I did want, oh, go right ahead. But here's my personal thought. We asked you in January, crickets. We heard nothing. We went and I talked to several of you, crickets. And what I'm saying is, is that we're just citizens who are trying to help citizens. We don't get paid for this or anytime, we don't get any benefits unless you talk about the bean burrito we get a chance to eat. We're doing this just simply out of the love. It's just what we're doing. Our time has now come. The process that you are having are having an impact on us. And as I told you, as she showed you at the beginning, when it comes to systems, there are four ways that you can get impacted by a system: time, talent, treasure, and temperature. If you can kill a person's will, then no longer will a project, in essence, work. That's... That's temperature, just killing their will. If you do not have the resources or the right people in place, which you all have experienced about not having the right people in place, you can delay almost anything from happening, right? Money is the one thing that allows you to, to achieve everything, even if you don't have everything you need, because you can buy it. That's where the money becomes really important to us. You all have the ability to manage and do whatever you want. I'm here because of my love for Iowa City, but the reality is, and I'm saying this, the reality is, I don't live in Iowa City. I do this because I love Iowa City. I love to move my business to Iowa City. But this is you all's responsibility. This is on you. And whatever decision you make, I am going to be fine with the decision. If you believe that in essence it should come to an end, I am going to be fine if you make that. I would just simply say, this is about the citizens and the process that you're asking us to go through would have been great in January. In May, it almost kills the project. Actually, in May it will kill it.
Okay. We only have maybe just a minute or two to, before we need to take a break, before our 6:00 PM. I guess I want to just say, one, thank you all for coming. And then two, even though I hear the comments from my fellow counselors and the one that I stated myself, one, I want to say, your work is very important. I think you all showed that in your presentation today, that systemic racism is what we wanted to address in 2020, you know, and find those recommendations through this process. That still holds true for us today. So thank you for doing the work. I know that it's not easy. There's been a lot of challenges along the way, but here you, here we are today. The other thing that I would say is, even though, you know, it's been stated, we need to know something about the budget, that was not a no. I don't want you to walk away and, and think that this council, I heard no one say no. I do believe that we want to, I know for certain, we want to support you in ways to advance this work so that you all can complete the work. So that is not what I heard from today. So I don't want you all to walk away and think that we said no. The other thing is if, I want to encourage you all to go back and have a discussion. Feel free to come back to council and, or send a memo or whatever the case may be, if you have some clarification. Again, I think at this moment, we weren't supposed to have a decision for you anyway. It was a presentation and you wanted feedback and so that's what we gave you at this time. And we look for, and again, personally, you know, mayor's hat off, I really do admire every one of you and recognize the sacrifices you all are making. It's not easy. This has been, you know, a commission that has had a lot of light and I, I recognize that you all are in, in doing some work that is heartfelt and I'm looking forward to the recommendations that you all give to us at the end of this time. So with that, we'll probably need to end our work session for, we're going to actually, yeah, we're just going to.
Recession?
We're going to do a recess and then come back after our 6:00 PM meeting. So the council has recessed until after the formal meeting. Yes? All right. It is after 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh?
Yeah.
Teague?
Here.
All right. Want to welcome everyone to their city hall that is here in person and to anyone that is joining virtually, welcome as well. The first item is, or the item number two is proclamations, and this is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Oh, yes. Before we go there, just want to turn it over to our city manager just to talk about some severe weather things.
You probably all are aware, there is some severe weather coming our way. If the sirens do sound, we will move to three different locations. So the mayor and council are going to follow me into the finance department where we have a vault there that you're going to be in. The general public has two options. Eric will lead a group down the stairs into our basement break room area. And then if anybody has difficulty traversing stairs, Ashley is going to take you to the clerk's office where we have a vault room there as well. So if those sirens sound, again, Eric will go downstairs for the public. Ashley will stay on this level and head straight to the rear of the building and we'll wait for the all clear. Then the, the police and fire department will give us an all clear when it's safe to, excuse me, resume the meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and we hope nothing happens here, right? All right. All right. So we're moving on to item number two, which is Proclamations 2A, Older Americans Month. life experiences, and whereas Iowa City is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society, and whereas Iowa City recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all, and whereas Iowa City can enhance the lives of older Americans and our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older Americans Month, and Iowa City and urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them. And to receive this proclamation is city, is our senior center commissioner Nancy and Warren accepting. So please, come at this time.
And we'll have you all come here to the podium. Thank you. Yes, great. And thank you as well.
Bless you.
Well, thanks to both of you. All right, we are moving on to our consent agenda items, which is items three through seven. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, if I just may, I'd like to request separate consideration for 7A.
Sure. So could I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through seven, excluding 7A?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Mo. And anyone from the public like to address any item in our consent agenda? If you're in person, please raise your hand. Virtually, raise your virtual hand, say no one. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
All right. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 7A, could I get a motion to approve, please?
Move to defer to our June 18th meeting.
Okay. A motion to defer. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, the one point of clarification I'd make is the item sets a public hearing for June 4th, and so if we were to set, if we were to defer to something past that date, we would just need to do something else. It'd be just a different motion.
Correct, correct.
Well, that would be, we would just want to defeat this motion then tonight, and then, and/or amend it on the, on the floor to a latter date that would be appropriate, given the, given the date that you would move to defer to, if I'm making sense.
Would folks support an amendment to change the date to approve the hearing, however the proper length is, so that we could vote on this particular consideration for the 18th?
Second.
Okay. Any, so we're deferring it to the...
So the public hearing would be on the 18th?
So we would have to amend it now and then defer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd have to probably check to see what the July, 1st July date is, and maybe we could just set that date now, and then you would move to amend it to whatever that date is, and then we would have the vote on the motion to amend, and then depending on the outcome of that, we would have a motion to, well, have the motion to defer, presumably.
Hold on. Can you explain that again, because I really don't understand it?
Because what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't understand what exactly you are saying for that.
Yeah, well, let me start again. It's my understanding that what councillor Dunn is intending to do is move this motion to set, well, resolution, setting a public hearing presently for June 4th to the meeting date of June 18th, for a public hearing to be at the presumably subsequent city council meeting. Am I correct so far, councillor Dunn?
Correct.
And so in order to achieve that result, if it's a will of council to do so, there would be a motion to amend that first, changing the June 4th date at which we would have the public hearing to July, whatever it is, I'm sorry, to July 18th. And then if that passes, then it's my understanding that councillor Dunn would like to move to, I'm sorry, move to defer the item, although I would say in the alternative, if you just want to have this
Yeah, we could just...
In July 18th, we could just amend it now, vote on it now, and be done with it.
So we would, so in that case, we would amend it to the public hearing on the first meeting of August, correct? Or first meeting of July?
Yes, which I'm told is July 18th.
July 16th.
Oh, sorry, sorry, 16th.
So I would rescind my previous motion and motion to set the public hearing for July 16th.
I saw, I saw this is going to go to the agenda for tonight, like just bleed out from the concern.
Well, he did. Councillor Dunn, as any councillor can, asked to be withdrawn for separate consideration. That's what we're doing now. And now we're kind of working our way through what it is that the council would like to do with it.
Yeah, just can I ask why we're doing that?
I just think I want a little bit more time to go over numbers, to talk with some folks in the community. That's, that's my biggest, biggest thing. So it has been motioned and seconded.
But the motion and the second was to defer until...
Oh, no, I made an additional motion, and councillor Alter seconded it.
Okay.
And we can vote on that?
So, that I'm clear. Your intent is for this public hearing to be on the 16th of July?
Correct.
So then we would defer this until June...
We would not be deferring. So it's now a vote on an amendment to set the hearing tonight for the 16th of July. That's what the amendment would be for.
Got it. So the amendment. All right. So we got a first and a second. Honestly, anyone from the public like to address that? Here and no, well, we're...
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't be in order.
All right, council discussion.
So, just, I just want to clarify, you just want more time to study?
I just want more time to talk with various stakeholders, various agencies that deal with people in this population.
Public hearing, June 4th, with a vote the following meeting?
Yeah.
A month from now, wouldn't be enough time?
I, I just, I, this is the timeline that I particularly am interested in, and I would appreciate supporting it.
Okay.
Does that, would that delay the implementation? I know this, when I read through this, it looked very similar to the direction we gave last time to city staff.
Yes. Would it delay the implementation? I mean, we can do retroactive action if there's any problem, so potentially, but...
We would, the implementation date would be after the final reading. We would have to work, work on a specific date. We wouldn't want to do any retroactive.
Right.
But there's not a, there's not a hard date that you have to meet. We would just tailor the implementation date to whatever that final reading is.
I just can't understand, you know, I, I think this is a discount. Am I right or reading it wrong? This is a discount for 75 to give, like, low-income people. We used to give them 65, 60, and now we increase the discount in their basic water bill. And last meeting, we approved it to be 75 discount from their basic use of water. And I don't understand, if we agreed, and this is for the benefit of the public, why we're deferring this?
We're not deferring it.
Why we're setting the public hearing on the other day?
I, I just think that it's best that we make the most informed decision with the resources that we have, and I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to Public Works yet. That's something that I want to do. I also want to reach out to a number of agencies that are working with populations that deal with this particular issue. So this is just something that I feel passionately about in this way.
I'm wondering, question for city staff, if we were to go ahead and move forward with the June 4th public hearing, does that obligate us to vote on this the following? Like, for instance, if at that point, after that public hearing, councillor Dunn perhaps still feels he wants to do more research, do we have to vote it on the next meeting, or could we vote on it? There's no reason we have to set it.
No, if...
The gap between public hearing and ordinance, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Right. So what we're setting today is for the public hearing on June 4th, and presumably the first reading, of which there would be three unless you collapse, would be on June 4th. And could council move to defer that first reading?
Yes.
I think we have enough, for me, I think we have enough time from now until June 4th, and I will prefer to stay it for June 4th.
I'm inclined to agree, because the third reading, then, if we go by the normal path, would still wouldn't be till July. Like, there would still be time. But there's no, I don't, I guess, I guess I'm not inclined to delay this, because I still see that, you know, if we do all three readings with a June 4th public hearing and a first reading, second meeting in June, a second reading, one meeting in July would be third reading. I think there's still time. So, and then we could all, you know, that's the reason why we have three readings, is we can change our minds between reading one and reading three if new information comes to light. So I would be inclined to, to not support a delay or change of data on this. That's just my...
Yeah, this, of course, is a sticky, well, it's not a sticky situation. I think a councillor is asking for some time to just go out and do some research. You know, I understand the timeline that councillor Harmsen just talked about, the three readings. I'm not in a position to question, you know, why does he need that, you know, that much time. I'm inclined to just support the, you know, the amendment. It does delay, but I think I would give that courtesy to any one of our councillors.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, for the amendment.
Which is the...
It is amended. So the amendment for the public hearing is set for July 16th.
Correct. Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
No.
Motion passed at six to one. We are moving on to item number, let me make sure there's no correspondence. No. We're moving on to item number eight. This is...
Mayor, we just approved the amendment. I think we still have to approve 7A.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Great. Could I get a motion to approve 7A?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, moved by...
Dunn.
Dunn and Burgess, and seconded by Burgess.
Mr. Mayor, the motion originally was moved and seconded, and we only need to do that once. And then it was amended, so it's, whoever, I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't have it written down. I'm sorry. I'm sure Ashley has it. At any rate, we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
Having it done, sorry.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number eight is community comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to the council. Because community comment is for items not properly noticed on the agenda, council cannot engage in discussion or debate due to open meeting laws. And I'm going to allow, could I see the hands of individuals that want to speak during this time? Yep, we'll allow for three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Brandon Ross. I am from Iowa City. I am thinking globally, I'm acting locally. I am Ukrainian-American, also Jewish-American. Half my mom's family is from Ukraine. And right now, the doomsday clock, which is the closest to midnight it has ever been, which is the clock, which if it does hit midnight, that means we're in a nuclear disaster and we've been incinerated. Because of the US meddling in Ukraine, we are at a very, very, very bad time. I ask people to pay attention to this and to contact their council people, not their council people, but their, their congresspeople, although you can contact your council people. I'm sure they'd like to hear from you. You know, that basically what has happened is, after the US helped overthrow democratically elected president in Ukraine in 2014, then armed right-wing militias, basically fascists, for eight years, including the killing of 20,000 Eastern Ukrainians and over 2,000 children, hospitals were bombed, schools were bombed, UNICEF put out a warning that over half a million children were at danger, mortal danger. Over 4 million people had fled Ukraine and east to go to Russia to take refuge. Think about that. They went to Russia, because those were Eastern Ukrainians. Then, after 3,000, 3,000 UN security ceasefire violations by the Kiev regime in February of 2022, Russia interceded on behalf of Eastern Ukraine. Then the talks were actually discussed and negotiations were to be had in March of 2022, and they were scuttled by the US through the proxy of Boris Johnson, and the US sent in appropriated $100 billion in arms. And then, basically, it began, the real, the real murder and the annihilation. There's over half a million Western Ukrainians, Kiev regime Ukrainians that are casualties, and the casualties in Eastern Ukraine and Russia are estimated somewhere around 80,000. So we're in a devastating situation. But recently, the US had appropriated weapons for Israel, Kiev, Ukraine, and Taiwan, which was reckless. And then yesterday, I heard ex State Department member Victoria Nuland, who worked with Dick Cheney and Donald Rumsfeld in the W. Bush administration, say that we should bomb Russia if, if things go on. And right now, that is not really the way to go. We could be incinerated. We won't have any elder people. Bob Dylan's warning, a hard rain's going to fall, is really going to happen. Please, contact your congresspeople. No more weapons. Negotiations, ceasefire now.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Currently, I'm from Tiffin, but on June 15th, I moved to Iowa City. I did send everyone, my name's Mary McCann. I did send everyone an email with a great deal of information about my concerns, but I'll give an overview here. In December, I was present to watch the challenge that the Tiffins mayor, city council, and Sheriff Conkle faced when they presented the Tiffins five-year law enforcement contract to the county board of supervisors. I did attach a number of things for you to refer to. 70 miles per hour. Should I continue?
So we're going to continue our meeting for now, but we're going to keep watching. And I'm going to give you about an extra 15 minutes. I mean, 15...
And I'm 73, so I can keep talking.
15 seconds.
I practiced, I've practiced for 73 years to, you know, talk for very long periods of time, ask my grandchildren. At any rate, we'll go back to that I... my grandchildren. At any rate, we'll go back to that I watched, I watched what they were facing when they were trying to pass a five-year law enforcement contract with the board of supervisors. And I sent you a great deal of information. As you know, the 911 calls that come through the Johnson County Emergency Communications Center range from 11,000 per month to 12,000 per month. And I also have a great deal of detail that I sent to you about those needs. When the board of supervisors voted, the three ayes were the people that are up for election right now. The three nays, the two nays, excuse me, were V. and John, people who I admire for the work that they do in our communities. But under these circumstances, we have a conflict. Mandy Remington is running for a seat, and she agrees that money should be pulled from law enforcement in order to take care of social services. I would ask you to consider that perhaps the city councils, who did all the negotiations, especially in the unincorporated areas, are the people who represent us. The people in Tiffin did not, do not feel represented by Des Moines. When they look for representation and democracy, they look to their city councils. They look to the hours that they spent in negotiation for what our, our city needs. I feel the same way when I moved here, that I look to you to represent each of your constituencies, of which I will be part. And part of that is to have law enforcement. As we are right now, the government in Des Moines, Des Moines has ended all liaisons to law enforcement from social services. It took Corleville, North Liberty, and the sheriff's department together to join for a grant to get one social worker to help out. One, for the three of them to share. State government is not going to have to dictate this to us, I would think. They have a reality that we don't share. And I know that people in Tiffin were very angry to think that any contract that comes before the county board is going to be treated with law enforcement as prejudiced. They're going to rule against it. They're going to find a way. And in a time when we are facing extreme challenge for law enforcement, in an election year where there are more threats than anyone has ever seen before, I think that we need to understand, this is not the time. We do have to build community. And I admire the people that do that. I like to think I'm part of that. But we have a long way to go to get society ready for a 91, 911-less opportunity.
Yep. Thank you. Will you please sign your name in on the desk here? There's a sign-in. Yes, thank you so much. All right. Seeing no one else for public comment. We're going to move on to planning and zoning matters, which is item number nine. 9A is rezoning 302 through 316 East Bloomington Street, local historic landmark. Ordnance, rezoning property located at 302 through 316 East Bloomington Street from Central Business Service Zone to CB2 with a historic district overlay zone. And can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Mayor, I'd move to defer to the June 18th formal meeting.
There's a movement to defer.
I'll second.
There's a seconded, so there's a movement by Dunn, seconded by Mo. Anyone want to give some comments on why this is?
No.
No? All right. So when we do a movement like for deferment, we, I guess we can invite the public up to just give some discussion if they like.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
That's up to the presiding officer. That's you in this context.
Yeah. I mean, there's people here that want to, that came to be heard. So there's a movement for deferment.
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
The applicant is HPC, right?
That's correct.
Would the applicant support a motion to defer to the 18th?
Yes.
My only concern is, the chair of the HPC is here. I wonder if the HPC has actually weighed in on that question.
They have not.
Then I think it's probably have, the answer has to be that there's no position taken.
Sure.
Any members from the public like to address this topic? And this is the historic, local historic landmark consideration. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. And if I could see just the hands of anyone that wants to, okay?
This is before we make a motion to defer, so the only thing they'd be able to talk about is the motion to defer.
So...
Yeah.
Which is true. I mean, I mean, but still, the motion is on this historic overlay, so I mean...
Yeah. The question, if the question was, do we accept public comment upon a motion to defer? Was that your question, Counselor Dunn?
No, the question, well, so I guess what I'm caught up in is normally when we deal with a motion that's passed and sec, or that's made and then seconded, we then vote on it, and then that is it. I'm wondering about making public comment on a motion to defer. We don't normally do that.
Well, I mean, every resolution, of course, would be a motion to second, public discussion, council discussion, and so forth. As I mentioned to the mayor earlier, whether to allow public comment upon this kind of motion, or frankly, kind of any kind of motion, is up to the presiding officer. And so if the presiding officer wishes to just move forward with the vote, that's fine. We can certainly do that. If the presiding officer wants to welcome public comment, that's fine, too.
Yeah. But I think I heard you say that you're thinking that the comments from the public should only be related to the deferment.
Yeah. Yeah, because that is the item that we're now discussing.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so you can only really discuss if we should defer or not defer this item. So you really can't go into a lot of comment on the merits of to landmark or not to landmark this position or this property. Okay? So if you are wanting to give public comment about this deferment, I'll welcome you at this time.
Well, I guess I'll say that you should probably defer it. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Jay Hanahan, by the way.
Yep. And you're from what city?
Iowa City.
And I'll have you sign in right there. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I just want to be, my name's Thomas Zager. And I just want to be clear that if I'm commenting on the deferment now, so if you choose not to defer, I'll still have an opportunity to speak about it.
Correct.
I didn't expect that this would be deferred. That surprises me a little bit, and I don't have an opinion on the deferment specifically. All that I want to say on the record is that I had a conversation with Maz before this meeting. And if you do choose to defer, I would enjoy the opportunity to convey some of the things that we discussed to other people that have strong feelings about this issue. But that's how I would use this time to, as an active citizen. But I don't personally support deferring it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. And you don't have to take it off the sticker. You can throw it in the basket.
There you go.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, Lou Tastner, Iowa City. I also was surprised by the motion to defer. And I don't, can't really have an opinion, I have opinions on the actual item on the agenda. But I would hope there's going to be some discussion as to why there would be a motion to defer, because I think that's very important for the public to know, why it would be deferred at this point when it's already, already been a very sort of long, involved process. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Sharon DeGraw, and I support the motion to defer, in part because, well, totally because of the week leading up to this. A friend who is in the business community, who I know was aiming to talk to Maz to flip her vote, said things that blew me away that were untrue. And I think that's important to have further conversation and clear those items up. It was a lot of hyperbolic talk, and it was just alarming. And I hope that that doesn't become the direction that Maz is persuaded to believe. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Sellegrin, and I would prefer to just proceed with the vote. I think that I can address some of the concerns of counselors during public comment, and I would say, let's just do it tonight and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your city and...
Hi, Susan Futrell, Iowa City. I did have some comments about the original motion. In terms of a motion to defer, I don't have a strong, I'm surprised also, I don't have a strong feeling either way. I think I would only support deferring if that time on the council could be used to discuss in informal meeting or with the staff some of the concerns that have been raised. The mayor pro tem, in particular, has brought up some important issues about how we maintain older housing stock in the city that I think are worth exploring. I don't think a vote against this designation would address those issues. I still think the designation needs to go forward. But if the extra time were to be used to further strengthen the benefits of that designation, then that seems, that seems useful. Otherwise, I think if you don't have time to talk more about it in between, it's probably time to vote.
Thank you. And I'll ask you just to sign in there. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else for comment on this item, council discussion?
I think it makes sense if the applicant is no longer wanting a motion to defer. I can rescind it. I think it makes sense if the, if a representative not actually speaking for the applicant is not wanting a motion to defer. I think that that is appropriate. So I will ask people fail this.
So, yeah, so you, well, so you want to rescind the motion?
I think we have to vote on it, don't we? Can, can I rescind?
Yeah. My preference would be to, we just go ahead and vote it down if that's...
Great. All right. Any other, any other discussion by council? Roll call, please.
This would just be a voice vote as a motion.
Oh. So all in favor of a deferment, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Zero to six. Zero to seven. Sorry. All right. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Alter?
Second. Mo?
Okay. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And this is where you can come and speak on specifics. I'm going to, again, just let everyone know that this is an opportunity to speak to council. Council will not engage in discussion or debate. However, council may ask to, staff to respond to a concern or a question posed by the public or to follow up with the speaker at a later time. So we'll invite you at this time. We'll give everyone, I just want to see a show of hands of everyone that wants to speak. Yep. And so we'll give three minutes to everyone. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, I'm Jordan Sellegrin. I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I live in Iowa City. I prepared a speech, but I don't know if it's the weather. I am not going to read it. I am very aware of Mayor Pro Tem's concerns with regard to historic preservation and how the culture of the commission could be improved. There is flexibility that could be introduced, I think, into the way we consider applications that I will raise during commission discussion at our meeting tomorrow, which was rescheduled due to agenda items, things. So that meeting is at 5:30 tomorrow. I would invite anybody in the public to be present at the meeting and speak during public comment, so they can share input on how we can move forward as a commission and how city staff can improve historic preservation efforts in general. And I just want the counselors to know that as the chair, I, I am definitely willing to work toward any improvements that are suggested. And those are my comments. And I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I invite people to just kind of join and stand in line and just come forward. Yep. Welcome.
I spoke to you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to you just a minute ago. So...
Please restate your name and city you're from.
My name is Jay Hanahan, and I live in Iowa City. I would ask you guys strongly to vote this measure down tonight. I don't believe that is, it's really historic, especially the, the building where the laundromat is. And I would also, I don't think that if the owner was going to sell it, I don't think you would be talking about this tonight. Also, if you talk to other businesses, for example, St. Mary's Church, that there has been designated historic, they have to go through a lot of things to get things done on the outside. And you are not providing enough help to the owners of their buildings. I mean, 25% from state tax revenues to restore a property building is not sufficient enough. And when he goes to sell the building, if it's designated historic, he'll take a loss a little bit on the building. And so I would encourage you guys to vote this down and send it back to the historic commission, maybe see if they could divide the property up for the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your city and, and your name.
My name's Thomas Zager. Maz, thank you for our conversation, and know that I will strongly advocate for your concerns that you raised with me. So thank you. I've spoken at a lot of meetings about this, so you know where I stand on this issue. And similar to Jordan, I've made some last-minute revisions to what I was going to say, but I, however, am still going to read the majority of what I was going to say. You know, when we urge landlords to reduce rent, require affordable units, it may well reduce their profit margins. And we see the collective good that this does in our communities. And when we require higher environmental standards, it cuts into the bottom lines of developers. When we zone, it means a neighbor can't bulldoze their house, build a gas station, and cash the check. But we all know why these things are right and appropriate. And this situation is no different. Nobody in this town who owns a multimillion-dollar building or property is a victim. Maintenance of buildings, old and new, is expensive and is a responsibility. In fact, for newer buildings, even more expensive. Try building one. The motion has sailed through our civic processes, HPC unanimous, P&amp;Z basically unanimous, support from city staff, overwhelming majority of council, hundreds from the community have written or turned out from all perspectives, including the business community. The building has been identified in the comp plan forever to be designated. The owners themselves have thoughtfully maintained and preserved this particular building, and for 100 years seen the dividends from that preservation work returned to them. It may be time for a new owner and new ideas for the next life of this building, new investment, but there is never a right time for demolition and more luxury condos in Iowa City. Nobody sends postcards of five-over ones. The process has been transparent, thorough, and fair. The application checked every single box. Bruce, I voted for you, because we share a lot of values, but your peculiar waffling on this, sort of slam dunk of an application, is disheartening to me. Everybody is watching how you guys vote. So vote in line with your community, with your commissions, and with your staff, because if our commissions, codes, processes, and civic plans ultimately have no authority, do any. Put it to rest so that all of those who have mobilized to save this building can instead be mobilized for causes more dear to you. A vote in favor is not just right, it will mandate and empower the HPC to overhaul and refresh how our preservation policies are communicated and implemented. Even if there are any ambivalence left in your mind, I ask you to defer with humility and respect to the unanimous opinions of those who have given this such close consideration. Your vote is recorded, but not just in the dusty ledger books of City Hall, it's also recorded in our community's consciousness. Do you, as an individual, represent our council on the choice to send a message to our community about what our local government is worth, capable of, and valued? our community about what our local government is worth, capable of, and values? Please do not use this particular building as a pawn. Vote yes, show us that you listen to us, that Iowa City is still a city worth fighting for and living in. I'm gonna skip a little bit here, I'm running out of time. And show us that as our leaders and our neighbors, that you also want to live in a community guided by collective values over personal profits. You have a big audience on this issue, and spectators love a buzzer beater, so let's see one from you tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna call Jackie, who's online. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Jackie Biger. That's spelled B-I-G-E-R, and I'm in Iowa City, and I'm calling in favor of the zoning, the historical zoning of this property as well. I just want to say that I live in a house that's 100 years old. I live in a conservation district, and that was not something that came easy to us. We were lucky to be a recipient of a home through the university housing program that used to exist where they would remodel rentals, and we are so lucky to get to live in the neighborhood that we do, and we are so proud of our neighborhood, and we are proud when we get to remodel. And yes, we have to follow certain stipulations, but that's because, you know, how a built environment feels and what it looks like matters. And part of why we love Iowa City and the North Side and what we've chosen to make our lives here is because of buildings like this one, and because of the North Side Neighborhood District, the North Side businesses, and the way you feel in the space really matters, and saving history really matters. Once this is gone, it's gone, and we have very little left in our town to look to, to remember what our history was of and how far we've come as a community. So, I just urge you to vote to save it.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Yes, Lou Tascinari, Iowa City. So, two final points, from me, anyway, for your consideration. The first, legal, the last speculative. When deciding whether to landmark the Sleazak Hall complex, the city should be guided by its own historic preservation as ordinance and should bow neither to the hypothetical threat of a lawsuit nor to anecdotal screeds from unrelated property owners. Any attorney, any attorney, who has successfully represented municipalities with respect to zoning and landmarking decisions will confidently tell you that the decision to landmark historically historic private-owned buildings violates neither federal nor state law, so long as the buildings in question meet the standards in the city's historic preservation ordinance and landmarking, and is not done for anti-religious discrimination or misuse of position reasons. Federal and state courts have consistently interpreted the law in a manner that allows municipalities to landmark buildings owned by private individuals as well as religious institutions. Unfortunately, it is common for owners and armchair lawyers to raise the threat of a lawsuit in response to land use and land-making decisions as a way to intimidate city governments. Concern over a potential lawsuit should not, however, persuade elected officials from allowing... from following Iowa City's own ordinances. The best way to protect the city from a lawsuit is for council members to faithfully apply the city's guidelines for landmarking in a neutral manner, concentrating solely on the historic value and the significance of the building itself, neither on building owners, promissory notes from developers, nor irrefutable citizens. Now, the more speculative one. I just wonder, because I hadn't done this, I wonder in the course of your deliberations on this issue, have any of you asked yourself the following questions? Who shopped at the dry goods store? Who stayed at the hotel? Or perhaps more importantly, who was prevented from shopping or staying at the hotel? As just one example that hasn't yet emerged, consider the early Lebanese immigrants to our area at the turn of the last century, mostly Muslim and farmers, the ones who built the Mother Mosque in Cedar Rapids, the ones fleeing the breakup of the Ottoman Empire. Did they shop or swap at Holub and Sons? I bring this up because, as so clearly stated by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, it is only by rallying around places that bring stories to life that communities are not only empowered by their unique pasts, but also safeguard a sense of identity, continuity, and vitality for the future. You simply don't ask those kinds of questions without those landmarked buildings. That's what those landmarked buildings do for a community. The Sleazak Hall complex should be officially recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm such a nervous speaker, I'm glad not to have to put this off again. I wanted to, first of all, again, thank all of you on the council for the votes so far that have kept this process moving forward, and the ones of you that have really articulately said why you voted in favor and support this.
Will you state your name and city for the record?
Oh, sorry, I did it before. Susan Futrell, and I'm from Iowa City. I live on the North Side. I know you all have a hard job to do balancing the needs of different perspectives and individuals in the community, and that you can't always make everybody happy. And I want to say again, as has been said, I think you have an opportunity with this vote, either to make a few people happy over some expected financial gain and financial benefits, or a lot of people all over the community, small businesses, neighbors, visitors, happy because you've helped maintain and preserved a kind of quality of life and culture in our town. The process going on this long has given me the opportunity to think more about some of the other issues that came up at previous meetings around affordable housing. And I also wanted to address the concerns that the Mayor Pro Tem has raised. I've been thinking about them a lot, and also just walking around the neighborhood, thinking about what it would be like to have another high-rise apartment building in that area. I think, again, as I said in my earlier comment, taking some time to really address those concerns is really important. This is... Historic preservation used to be about the elite and about the kind of big fancy buildings, but in my experience in Iowa City in the last 25 or 30 years, it has really been about preserving the older parts of town, which in many, many cases are also the most affordable, walkable, family-friendly neighborhoods that we have. Over 50% of the units in the North Side are rentals. They're almost all old, but not all of them. Some of them are eight-plexes and four-plexes. A lot of them look like single-family houses, but they're really apartments and rooming houses. I think these questions that have been raised about how the council and the Historic Preservation Commission could support owners of older properties to help keep them among the more affordable parts of town are really important. But I will say, in closing, that I think a vote against preservation for this building doesn't do anything to address those concerns. It just lets us sacrifice a really important resource in our community that we can't... that we will never have back. But addressing those concerns after voting to support the designation could make an even more powerful statement going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is James Davies from Iowa City. I'm here to voice support for the listing of this project. I first want to just take a minute to commend the Skarta family. I think they've done a really excellent job at preserving this building to this point. I think they're leaving a really remarkable legacy of dedication and hard work that they should be incredibly proud of. It seems to me that the discourse on this topic has kind of centered around the assumption that the property is potentially more valuable as an empty lot as compared to its fully leased current state, and I just want to state that I think that's very speculative and potentially untrue. Given the CB2 zoning, you're fairly limited to a height that you could get on that building, on that site, and the investment needed to make a more dense, fully leased space would be fairly large. I've also heard a lot of talk about support from the city financially. I did want to take a moment to just highlight the other tax credit potential that is unlocked by listing a building. Federal tax credits are a huge incentive structure to incentivize the rehabilitation and the renovation of projects like this. I've looked into seven projects in Iowa City that have qualified for federal tax credits, and the incentive structures for those total over $17 million. If you compare Iowa City use of these funds, I think there are seven projects in Iowa City. Dubuque has 52 projects, Waterloo has 30. So, it seems to me that Iowa City is doing something, but a bit of a disservice in not listing more of these buildings and unlocking these incentive structures. So, I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sharon Tegraw again.
Iowa City.
Iowa City?
Yes.
So, my head has shifted in terms of what I thought I was gonna say. So, one of the things I heard that come up is that it would help if the city staff had more, either more people or more time allotted to helping people with historic structures get the information that they need so that they can get their buildings worked on and tended to. And I think that's a great step forward if that were to happen, and that would be positive. I've also heard that some of the historic buildings can cost more to have repairs made, and in some cases, that's true, but what I found at my house is, like, when I had my roof painted the proper way, I have a metal roof, it's gonna last 15 to 20 years, and the similar houses with the same kind of painting treatment I've seen are lasting really well. So, it might be a little more expensive, but in the long run, it's less expensive because it's a higher-quality material that I'm going for, instead of just ripping off the roof and going with cheap shingles. The people that have come here for, like, the last three months or so, you've had over 100 positive letters in support of the designation. The vast majority of people that are living in the North Side that own their homes, I think they're happy, they're content. You don't hear them coming here complaining about the process. But last week, I referred to a friend who's a realtor who said that she was gonna try to contact Maz to flip her vote. The things that she was saying were shocking to me because she blowed so many things out of proportion to what my experience is, explaining what she thinks the experience she has had and what others will have. I just have caution, I would give caution to anyone being persuaded by that because it's business people who are trained to make as much as money as they can, and we've got this happy little neighborhood that seems to be doing pretty well, and I haven't heard a lot of complaint about historic preservation. And going forward, I hope that the Preservation Commission staff can all work together to make it a smoother process, and I hope that we have a six-out-of-seven vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. And the sticker can go on the list there. Yep, thanks.
My name is Thomas L. Preier, and I am not here to speak about historic buildings tonight, but historic lives on the South Side. The Shelter House Building has... If it's not on the agenda, sir. If you tell me when I can come and speak about disenfranchised people on the South Side, criminal activity in a place, I will find out. I have gone to Iowa City Police, I have gone to several different agencies, and I am here in desperation to be heard. If I cannot be heard, if there is a different date for this agenda to be heard, I will make it.
Yeah, we just passed that item, so typically that's towards the beginning of our agenda for a public comment on anything that's not on the agenda. So, we're back on June... On June 4th.
June 4th?
June 4th. Yes, we're back on June 4th.
Thank you, sir. I will be back here on June 4th.
All right. That's great news, all right. All right. Any... So, the public has spoken. We're gonna move on to council discussion at this time.
I had notes to talk about the legality of landmarking and notes to talk about the financial incentives, and I think that our community showed up and did better job than I possibly could have. I have notes about case law that's 40 pages long about why preservation has been tested over and over again. It's okay, but I think the actual lawyer who spoke will believe you. And as far as the incentives that the city currently provides that are valuable, I'd love to do more, but we're in a budget-challenged position as a city, but those state and federal tax credits are so, so, so big and important, and it's money coming from outside into this community, and I have personal experience with it. I bought a house, 130-year-old home that had a lot of needs, and I did it as a historic tax credit project. And it was my personal home, so I couldn't get federal tax credits, but if it were a for-profit company, like a Polly Eyes Restaurant or an apartment building, they could get 20-plus 25% of money coming from outside of our budget, outside of the city of Iowa City's budget from the state into Iowa City. And the cool thing about preservation is it creates tons of labor jobs, because historic preservation is about handwork, and it's craftswomen and craftsmen who are paid pretty well and are skilled people that I love having in this community, and we... I got to see that up close and personal. So, it's one of the reasons why I feel so positively about this opportunity for this community. It's not just the aesthetic dimension of that cool building, but also it's gonna create jobs, it's gonna create a sense of community. It's just, it's gonna be good for us.
I second all of that.
I do have a question for staff. I heard in one of the comments that if this is voted down now, this... we would never have this opportunity again for this to come before the council to make this project historic, provided that it's not torn down, right? Within a 10-day, I understand there could be like a 10-day request to tear down the building. Demolition. There was an example of another project that it was done within about 10 days is what we were told. So, the question is, if this, let's say it doesn't pass today, could this come before the council again?
Well, it's... This is a rezoning, an overlay rezoning, and so normally we don't like to see the same proposal in substance come back in a short period of time. However, if you're talking about, you know, 10 years from now, I know that this property has been at least discussed a number of times over the years. I think that it could be considered once more, whether it's just this single parcel or included in a broader parcel perhaps, at some time that doesn't feel like it's just looking for a do-over next month, let's say. And I'm not saying it's gotta be at most more than 30 days. I would want to see something more than that, but yes, it could come back at some point down the road.
You're saying sometime down the road? But you said in the beginning, "We don't like to see." Is that just "we don't like to see," or there is a law will prohibit it from coming within the conspiracy there by the commission again?
Right. We want to see a change in circumstances, if not a change in the plan itself. That is, we don't want to have the same motion for rezoning coming, or ordinance, I should say, for rezoning come kind of in surreal fashion over and over and over again. That's inappropriate. But again, with the great passage of time, usually there's a change of circumstance, maybe a change in comp plan or district plans, community needs or assessments, and again, like I mentioned, or part of a broader parcel that wouldn't be the exact same parcel that's at issue before you today. Those would all be fair considerations to bring it forth once more.
So, what you're saying is, if there was something that could feasibly change the circumstances of our standard of review, it would be appropriate to reassess?
Well, not just the standard review, because the, you know, the city's ordinance is what it is, and, you know, even if that remains the same, let's say 10 years from now, to use that hypoth... hypothetical, if there are changes in circumstances, you know, our community needs and so forth, then even without a change in the ordinance, I think that would be fair for a council to reconsider.
Can you go over what our standard of review is today?
Sure. So there are two things that you need to find, plus at least one of four things that follow. The two things that you need to find are that the property is significant to American and/or Iowa City history, architecture, archaeology, and culture. You need to have that. And you need to have that it possesses integrity of location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship. You need to have those two, plus one of the, at least one of the next four. Those four are, the property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, or are associated with the lives of persons significant in our past, or embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, method of construction, or represent the work of a master, or possess high artistic values, or represent a significant and distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction, or have yielded or may likely yield information important to prehistory or history.
Can you tell us, what does a standard of review typically mean for council's sake?
I'm sorry, what is a?
What does a, what does a standard of review mean?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to answer that. I mean, or you mean like a beyond a reasonable doubt, you don't mean that?
No, no, no. Like, so like, what is the importance of a standard of review?
I'm sorry, I'm missing your question. I'm sure it's clear, but I'm missing it.
So for the public, what does, what does a standard of review mean? Like, what is our job? Like, I understand that our job is to go through this, to determine these criteria.
Right.
But in a greater sense, like, is the standard of review to say yes or no to those questions? And if we get to a yes on multiple of those questions, then the answer is yes?
Yes. If you feel that all of these standards are met, then your vote should be yes.
And that's classified by law, correct?
I'm sorry?
And that's classified by law, right? It's in code?
Yes. The challenge would be if that decision is arbitrary or capricious, that would be the standard that would need to be met by challengers of your decision.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, over the last, last week, I really visited more than ten, eleven historic, like, houses. And I visited also the Verizon Building for the first time. So to look at it like closely, I was seeing it from far away. So I, I just believe it's a really beautiful building. And yes, it need to be that. But it need to be reserved. But looking at the whole lot and looking around, and it is really huge lot. It have another, like, buildings, not only that. I went and look at, and spoke to many owners who have historic, currently own a historic house. And those people are saying they like, they love what they're doing. Some of them are really will like taking care of the building. But some people complain about how difficult to keep up with, like, the building, like, to keep up with, for example, windows, like wood and all this. And also, I saw some building, like the Bloom, I think the Bloom House, that's what it called, on Summit and College Street. And I saw another yellow house, I believe is in the corner of College and maybe is that some, it does like governor or, or maybe Dodge, I don't, I'm not sure. But it is on the corner, and it is really failing apart. They are beautiful houses, and they are historic. And I look up the Bloom House, and it is on the National Register. And when I look at it, the pictures on the National Register is beautiful. If you compare it with the picture right now, it's failing apart. And I think people complain about they cannot keep up with those because if, like, expensive and all these kind of things. And they think that the policy for the city of Iowa City, when it come to historic, is really, really restricted. And I went and I look at the national policy for a national register as historic is way easy and flexible than the one that Iowa City have. And also, like, tax and everything that Josh you talked about, people, they heard about it, but didn't know how to navigate. We have a part-time staff. And I think the city used to have a full-time staff, Jeff, am I right? Long time, and now it's part-time?
Yes.
At, at some point, it was a full-time.
That sounds correct. It may have predated.
Yes. And, and now it's part-time. We're increasing historic preservations, and we have a part-time staff. And those commissioners, they're doing something else, just like the council. You know, we have our own full-time job. And I understand that, you know, many of you commissioners are moms and have full-time jobs, and you have, you know, also to take care of. So you depend on the staff mostly, just like us. We depend on staff most of the time. So, and I feel like we need, first, we need a full-time commissioner if we want to continue preserving buildings. So we need, not commissioner, I mean, a full-time staff. And, and also, we need, I would love to see the commissioner will sit down with all the historic reservations people and say, okay, how can we, we can become flexible? I cannot imagine, I don't know, like, the terminology for the, for the, for those things in, in English, but I can just like explain. For example, there is a house, and you know, the roof sometime come a little bit outside from the house like this. There is a wooden things here all around the house. That person want to change it to a metal, and you cannot see it. You can, like, if you went like outside and see, this is hiding. And she being told, no, you cannot change it to, to a metal. It have to be a wood. So this is not even seen, and the wood is not, she cannot keep up with it. But if she, they change it to metal, that will last, as you said, your roof is metal, and it can last for, for a long time. Another thing that, a door, like, inside door, it covered by a storm door. The storm door is beautiful. You know, the storm door from outside is really beautiful, and it's historic, need to be kept. But the door behind the storm door, that is failing apart. And it, when they want to change it, can we become a little flexible? Because this is not, this kind of inside is not outside. I know the topic today is not about changing the policy of historic preservation, as many of you said. And what I'm saying now have nothing to do with the building that we supposed to do tonight. But this big building, it need to be like, the person who own it, you know, it is not only one building, it's a lot. That means if somebody have one house and they complain about taking care of it, what about this person who going to take over about the whole block? So that's why I want to see flexibility for, from the Historic Preservation Commission and staff who can have more time to explain to the people about those tax credit, about, like, all these things that, like, available for them, and they don't know maybe about it, they don't know how to navigate. Even the language, by the way, you have to be architect or somebody to understand those language on those, that I read. I did not, some of them I did not understand. You know, what you mean by this and what? That's why we, those people need to have access to the commissioner, to the staff, to come and talked about their needs and what they want to see changed. That's what I want to see really on the, if we're going to continue doing this. I'm not against historic preservation at all. I would love to see the building that, it is really historic, and have a story behind it, or have a beautiful design to stay so we can tell the story for years to come. And even for like, when they come, they can come and look at it. Yeah, I understand that. But why we are so restricted? Why can't we become like a little flexible? You know, that's the thing that really hold me back from, like, voting for this, because I don't want to put that person in, like, really, you know, if the historic, the commissioner order, we are not going to have full-time staff, we're not going to be easy. We adding more buildings. We need a full-time staff. We need to be easy on, like, when it come to historic things. Yeah, a door behind a storm door, come on. No one is seeing that. And if that person, why should we ask them to have, to bring, like, to pay more to keep up with that than just go and have same door painted the same color and have the same thing? Just, to be honest, by going around, I just feel like a lot of people told me, like, things make sense to me. Why we become so restrictive like this? So that, that's what the thing that I would love to see if the council can talk about it. And if the commissioner will have, I heard from many people, and I talked to them, by the way, the people who was here, for example, Thomas, he is no longer with the commission. But when he left the commission, I think he had a speech, and he was talking about how he would like to see the commission become like some flexibility and how, and changing some stuff that happening right now. So that was his recommendation to the commission. But nothing happened after he left. So those are the thing that I really would like to see happening.
I just want to clarify a couple of facts about where we are with this rezoning right now. So if the property owner wanted to demolish the building and the zoning stays as it is, they can do so, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. If this zoning fails and it's present zoning, yes, the property owner could demolish.
So if the vote fails tonight, the property owner could choose to demolish?
That's correct.
And so I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, we think that there is value to this building as found by the Historic Preservation Commission, as found by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as supported by so many members of the community.
I think we do need to take a break, and it's, I know it says northeast.
No, it's not us.
Generally, we would rely on the weather sirens, Mayor.
Oh, so we would just wait for the sirens?
If the sirens.
Okay.
Yeah, we wait for sirens.
It says take shelter.
I, I think we should vote yes on local landmarking, is what I was trying to say. Because I think if we believe that this particular property has the historic integrity and meets the criteria that the Historic Preservation Commission recommended to us, that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to us, that so many members of the community and the business community have articulated so well, that we know there are financial incentives, this is a moment where we can actually preserve this building. And if we vote no, there would have to be a change in circumstances before it would come back for reconsideration for that protection. So I, I think this really is kind of like the core of preservation when we have an instance where the rezoning could mean such a significant destruction on the property.
I was going to say, and to your point about initially, the question about the property owner, if this fails tonight, the property owner himself could raise that building and all of that. So, and say, hey, here's the land for sale. So if we value, as Laura said, all that has been put before us, as well as all of the comp and strategic plans in which it also meets, I agree. I think we have such a preponderance of evidence. The other thing is that this is an eminently saleable parcel. A smart, I've seen this happen, not in Iowa City, I've seen it in Grand Rapids, which actually also has a very significant historic district. And property values have skyrocketed. Smart investors have bought historic buildings, have used the credits that have helped main, you know, the edifice, and then have been able to turn a pretty penny, both for the person who sold it and for the person who's bought it. So, you know, I mean, practically speaking, in terms of the economics for the owner, this is not a death knell. If anything, this is something that can be very, very saleable. So.
One last thing to, just the timing of this, and that would be, not all building owners are good historic building owners. Like, it takes a special kind of person to care for and love. And I'm one of them who complains, but I still love my historic home. This is the right time to do this because we, I think it behooves the whole community that the next owner of this facility is somebody who knows what they're getting into, who knows that it's historic, they know how it needs to be treated, and it's not something that, I guarantee, this will keep coming back, this building, because it is historic.
Yeah.
It's just going to keep coming back. So this is, this is the perfect time to do it.
I, I agree. But I want to ask you a question. Don't you think we have, like, increasing of historic building, and we, we're going to have more coming by us because we want to preserve all those historic buildings in town? Don't you think we need a full-time person to take care of that?
I believe it's a separate question, but yes. But I also, like, it's a separate, it's a separate.
Yeah, it's still that.
But I, I agree with that sentiment that we, yeah.
I mean, for future, sure, but, but right now, we've only got the one thing to consider.
I think we, I'm, I'm just asking. I'm just asking. We, we talk about many things, but I'm just asking you guys, do you think really we need that? That what I, we're going to have this, and we need, like, people really to, we need to take this serious as a full-time job for somebody to take care of our historic preservations.
Mayor Protam, are you conditioning your vote on the rezoning as to whether or not we agree to a full-time position right now?
I think I don't have to answer that question.
That, that's what it sounds like, so I'm unwilling to give that commitment right now. I don't think that's appropriate.
Did I ask you to do that? I don't think so. I asked Councilor Josh if he think, and he said he think that, yeah, true. But I did not say that.
To move us forward on this, I think we've already talked as a council of having a general discussion about this on a work session. And I think that that's, what I heard, Mayor Protam, was, was, was not a, I didn't, I didn't hear a, everybody must agree to this in order for, to agree to, to make a decision on this particular issue, but wanted to raise that as an awareness. And I think that's something that I would absolutely be willing to continue talking about on a work session, and something that if we then, after putting all of our seven wise heads together, decide that's something to move forward to as we move into the budget, you know, this fall, that's when we would start talking about priorities for the budget. And that would be the time, I would think, in the normal course of things, if we decided that's a wise move to communicate to city staff that that was our desire. So, so I do, I did not hear that connected, perhaps, is the same way that you did, Councilor Burkes.
Thanks for that clarification.
But thank you, even though I didn't ask nobody, but thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, all right. Lots of conversations have been had over the past couple of months on this. Just like many of my fellow counselors, I've been speaking to a lot of people on this topic. We've had a lot of correspondence on it. I'll tell you the thing that, you know, has given me the greatest pause, is that even the greatest, what I would call some of those champions of historic preservation, initially, when I first started talking to people before they even knew my position or anything like that on this, they were, there was a lot of conversations and willingness to, you know, divide the property to figure out if that could happen and when that can happen, because they were most interested in the, in the one building and not the, I don't know if we're calling it the carriage house and the laundromat. But they, they, they could see, and maybe that was more of a compromise for those individuals, you know, to say, you know, if, if there's a possibility for this, you know, this plot to be separated, then yes, I'm, I'm down for that. We've, we now know, I think, that it cannot be split. Now, I want to ask one more time. Can this property line at any point, even if it's at the request of the owner, to separate the properties, the buildings, is that ever a possibility?
I have two comments. One, remember, that's not the, the question before you.
Yeah.
You know that. You know that. It, it's hard to imagine how we would get there from here, but if your question is purely hyper- your question is purely hypothetical.
It is.
I, I could imagine a scenario in which portions of this building are demolished. This, of course, would be dependent on a no vote from you, counsel, tonight. You know, and then some replating, I mean, that seems like it would be a near impossibility, but I, I can't say that it's impossible someday in the future.
You, you said if it's no vote?
Right. If, if council votes yes tonight, then, then nothing can be demolished, and I, I think the question is moot. Of course, this is a zoning matter, so zonings can be undone in the future, and maybe that's your answer to the mayor's hypothetical. But if the question is, could it be done following a no vote of the council, it's hard for me to imagine how it would be possible, but I can't swear that it is 100% impossible.
Okay. Thanks for that. I, I just needed to once again hear that I have maintained that this property at 302 is absolutely historic. And I've also, you know, spoke to individuals that, you know, and I do recognize and respect the work of the person that did the review and said the entire, you know, property is historic. I also read our, the guidelines, I'll just say, where it's the entire property, the adjacent properties as well, has to be considered historic. Now, this is where I pivot. 302 absolutely is historic, and I understand it's all connected. I've rode around there, I think, three times today, but I've rode around there over the past couple, couple of months, just to take a, a look at it. Given the likelihood of, you know, this property possibly never being bisected or anything, I am going to vote in favor of this, only because I really do believe it is historic. And having it totally lost, I don't think I'm willing to gamble that at this moment. But my vote last time was really to let you know, I was not, and, and still am, a little like in the middle on this, but I do believe that I'm compelled that this is historic, without a doubt. I've never not said it wasn't. And the entire connected, you know, it's all connected and that type of stuff. I'm going to support it tonight, but I would like to see some of the discussions happening to help those that want to really be a historic landmarked property owner, a successful one, and, and a property that they want to live in, individuals that are renters want to live in. So thanks to everybody that have gone through this process, thanks to the owners of this property. I know this has not been an easy road for you all to go down. And I'll just leave it at that.
And also, I just like add to that, if, if, if there is a way, we can do something in the future to this historic building, like for the, I don't know, maybe the commission will come with unique situation to, still after we reserve this, something can be done about it. I don't know. But, yeah, of course. I, I guess still encourage the commission to review their, their policies and make it easy on the people who preserve. Yeah, I will vote yes too.
Roll call, please.
Can I ask a very, very, very quick question? Is there room for, like, any comments are, have to be done now as opposed to after the vote?
Yes.
Is that correct?
I think so. I'm not sure what comments you're talking, if you're talking about on this item, this would be the time.
It's, it's more of a general observation for council.
I mean, if you want to talk to your fellow counselors, I mean, you can do that now, if it's on this topic.
I'll leave it.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to.
We need a motion to accept correspondence, please.
Oh, yes. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Move, Mo.
Move by Dunn, second by Mo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 10A, which is Asphalt Resurfacing 2024 Project: Resolution Approved Project Manual and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the Asphalt Resurfacing 2024 Project: Establishing Amount of Bid Security to Accompany Each Bid, Directing City Clerk to Post Notice to Bidders, and Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to wa, oh, hello, welcome. I didn't even see you up there.
I snuck in.
Yes.
So, good evening. I'm Mari Van Dyke. I'm with the Engineering Division. So this is an annual maintenance project that's part of our pavement management program. And the pavement management program is a program that we have that focuses on rehabilitating our existing streets so that they can last as long as possible before we have to reconstruct them. And so this project specifically focuses on asphalt overlay. So the general process of asphalt overlays starts with milling the existing layer of asphalt, if there is one. And then we'll patch the existing pavement underneath, and we'll also replace any broken curb and gutter. And then we also replace sidewalk curb ramps to make them ADA compliant. And then the last step is adding that new layer of asphalt. So it's generally two layers, each layer about a half, an inch and a half thick. So with all of this, like during construction, we're able to kind of keep the construction confined to one lane at a time, so that we can maintain at least one lane of traffic throughout the project. So for this year's locations, we have Park Road, which would be overlaid between Riverside Drive and Rocky Shore Drive, and then we also have East Benton Street, which would be overlaid between Gilbert Street and Van Buren Street, and then we would chip seal Taft Avenue between American Legion Road and Herbert Hoover Highway. So the estimated construction cost is $1,350,000. And for schedule, we have bid opening June 11th. We would award the contract June 18th, and then construction would be from July to November this year. So that's the quick summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you pull up the map again?
Can you, how many times can you resurface?
Pretty much, I mean, you would just keep milling the layer, and I think it's kind of indefinite, and as long as the pavement underneath holds up, okay, because it needs a decent base underneath of it to hold up.
Is the, I'm thinking about City Park Pool right now. Is the resurfacing, did you take into account future large projects like City Park Pool? I see, number one looks like it's about Hancher, maybe?
Yeah, pretty much. It's right around there, yeah.
Is that a concern at all to engineering, that there'd be a lot of construction activity in a year, or is that?
Um, not so much. I mean, it would probably have some impact, but I think we really wanted to prioritize Park Road, just because of the shape it's in already.
Understood. Okay.
All right. Here are a number of questions for you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Okay. Welcome, welcome.
So I'm Supra Throw from Iowa City. I, I ride my bike on Park Road every day, and it's really horrible. But I also walk my dogs on Park Road, and the sidewalks don't even, the sidewalks don't, on Park Road, don't come close to meeting the new standard. So I know that, that you can't answer my questions, but I have the concern that we're just kicking the sidewalk problem on down the road.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? See no one in person or online with their virtual hand raised. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Move by Dunn, second by Sala. Counsel discussion.
Do we have a plan to deal with the sidewalks? Or?
So with, with road maintenance, I'm going to oversimplify things, and some of our engineers can, can supplement what I'm saying, but you really have a, a couple of options. We're talking about the overlay option here. And again, if you look at what we're doing with a $1.3 million budget, that should tell you kind of the level of maintenance that is. To put that in context, you know, Rochester project, which is that full reconstruction, looking at the sidewalks, basically ripping everything up, you're, you're six, seven, eight million. We're getting ready for Court Street, which is now probably nine, 10 million. So this project is not intended to be a whole-scale fix of, of Park Road. Really, honestly, I think we're buying probably 10 at 15 years of, of road maintenance with the project of this scale. But again, that's what we're investing into it. To, to directly answer your question, no, we don't have any major road reconfiguration projects on Park Road. That would include sidewalks. This one will, will include curb ramps, which we do, but it won't address the, the kind of the mid-block sidewalks. If there are deficiencies with like cracking and things like that, that would get caught up in our sidewalk inspection program. So every 10 years, every bit of sidewalk gets inspected by the city, and we will fix or compel property owners to fix those sidewalks. So I, I don't know where Park Road stretch would be in, in terms of our inspection cycle, but we do have a process in place to address the, the quality of the, of the payment, pavement, not the kind of width.
That was my next question, so thank you very much.
Do we also address those on a complaint basis, Jeff? That every 10 years is the normal cycle?
Yes, yes. If there's, if there's complaints, we'll add that to that years.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Here are no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10B, Landfill Equipment Building Replacement Project: Resolution Approved Project Manual and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the Landfill Equipment Building Replacement Project: Establishing Amount of Bid Security to Accompany Each Bid, Directing City Clerk to Post Notice to Bidders, and Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome. Great.
Joe Walter from Engineering.
Jen Jordan, Resource Management.
Great.
We're going to tag team here a little bit. So I'm going to start out just by showing you where we're at on the site. So we have the Scale House, which is going to get a little bit of work. I'm going to talk about that. We have two existing buildings labeled Building A and Building B, and then the new building, which you can see there. So generally, this project's going to involve the demolition of the Building B. And sorry for that typo in the initial drafts, it's Building B. Renovations to the Scale House will include a new water service, so we'll be bringing potable city water into that building. That water main was extended with the IWV project, which we completed about a year and a half ago. And then there'll be a backup power for the scale. One of the biggest things, we can lose almost everything at the landfill, but you don't want to lose the scale. So it, it creates a, a lot of paperwork for our staff if we lose the scale. New building, that's a rendering of that building that's in the planned set, shown there at the bottom of the slide. We're taking the opportunity to redo our utilities, gas, storm sewer, water main. There'll also be a bulk water fill station, similar to the one that's at Transit and Equipment on South Riverside Drive, similar to the one that's out on East Side Recycling. So, and Jen?
Thank you. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about the timeline, and then show you some pictures of the existing buildings, one that was just coming down. A few of you have been there. Thank you for visiting and seeing those. So this project goes back a good handful of years, as you can see here. We started being, with being included in the Public Works Master Plan many years ago. The landfill building was included in CIP in 2018. So we've been taking steps towards making this project a success, or hopefully a success in reality. The biggest thing that came out of hiring SCS in 2021 was determining the location for the new building. If you think back to that first slide, it's actually adjacent to the north of where the existing building is that's coming down. So that's probably the biggest thing that came out of the study with SCS. Okay, there we go. Okay, so Building A, again, this one is staying. So this has three equipment bays, and then a staff break room, which you can see here on the right, in two different sections there.
You must have an Android. It didn't come on the Apple.
They just ask you to leave, not us.
Apple users, we're on our own.
Okay.
You can shelter, I'll cover you.
You can continue.
So you can see, it's, this building was built in 1989. You can see it's in a pretty bad state of disrepair. I tried to get the most flattering photos. It's, it's, that was really challenging to do. So this space is currently used by 10 staff, including, I'm very proud to say, we have, now have a woman operator. So we do have one bathroom and one shower space for all 10 staff. At any given day, eight or, eight or nine of them are there. So this is another shot of the building. This is looking into the shower and into the single stall bathroom. You get a sense of, it's, it's pretty decrepit at this point, and it's definitely a morale issue for staff. This is Building A, again, this is staying, so this is looking out into the bay area. There are three overhead doors. The north end there, the far end, is actually the break room underneath the, the, the space up above there with the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Mezzanine.
Mezzanine, thank you. Yep. So, and then the next picture is showing from the mezzanine down. So again, this building is staying. We will continue to use this space. The break room will actually be used as part of our compost operations, our lab that we have at the landfill that'll move into the space. So moving on to Building B, this was actually the building that's coming down, built in 1992. You can see the great welcome it brings for staff with that great door and the rest, everything's resting out there. The area to the south is actually kind of where the buildings come together in the L shape, so the south and east side of the buildings. Any attempts that, or any concrete we had there at any point 30 or 40 years ago is long gone. Any attempts we've made to reinforce that space are long gone. So it's pretty much a mud pit. That is a space where the equipment comes into the building. So we really need to look at that as well, and we have done so. It's obviously in really poor shape there. So this is Building B interior. So again, this is about three equipment bays, and you can see from a climate perspective, this is not a great building. There's pretty much no way to climate control this. There's also no way to vector control. It is, if you've heard, you've heard me talk about vectors are the polite way at the landfill that we say rats, mice, and birds. So there are no, and raccoons, yes, thank you, and skunks. There are no way to keep those creatures out of these buildings. And this is where staff is working. This is where they're laying on the, on the ground, cleaning the material. You can see the piece of equipment on the left there. We have to clean that off on a regular basis to make sure that we can prepare or do proper maintenance for it. So if there are any leaks or if any cracks in the equipment, we need to be able to clean it to see that. Staff is literally laying on the ground in this building, and we just, we can't clean it. It's a, it's not a great situation for them. So we are very excited to be considering this new building and replacing this current one that we're, that we're looking at here. And that's what Joe will talk about next.
So that existing building is coming down, is about 3,000 square foot. The new building that we're putting up is over 12,000 square foot. So we're going to get substantially more space to store equipment. Give you an idea how this new building is laid out. So right now, we use the part of one of the, the existing buildings to, if we need to do some kind of washing of the equipment, which is a regular occurrence, coming out of the landfilling operations with dirt and trash and all kinds of things all over it. So we, if we're going to do maintenance, if we're going to do something on the equipment, we, we really need to clean it on a regular basis. So this building's going to have a dedicated wash bay. That's in the bluish purple color. That'll be one bay. The center there in the green is going to be three pull-through bays. So we could park two dozers in a bay, two compactors in a bay. We can get our, all of our trucks and our equipment into this building to store it and to maintain it. There'll be two offices here, so all of our staff doesn't have offices. Our senior operator doesn't have a place to have a private conversation with one of his staff. And so that, that'll be a And so that that'll be a huge improvement there. Have a really nice break room with a kitchenette and lots of storage areas for us to dedicate just things like charging all of our equipment. We'll have dedicated spaces for that. Some nice windows outside, some nice windows into the into the equipment base. And then we'll have a dedicated mud locker room if you guys have been down to Public Works. It'll be similar to that where guys can come in and wash their boots, wash their their pants, wash all their stuff, and have that space there so that we keep the mud and all of that out of the space where people are having their lunch, having their meetings, having those kinds of things. So you can see how that looks. Up in the upper left corner is the Scale House. The new building is sitting there in the in the center. We will have concrete on the west side. There'll be structural concrete on both sides of the building, but the dedicated concrete for parking and for movements on the west side. On the south side and the east side, it will be gravel. So to acknowledge the fact that that's our primary way to have the equipment come in, that concrete would take a lot of abuse, so we're we're going to have a surface there that we can maintain and replace. The in the lower left corner is where that bulk water fill station is going to be. And again, we're redoing storm sewer water mains. We're moving the LP tanks. We're putting in a backup generator, so quite a bit to do there. I put a couple of sections in. This is an interior section, so there'd be a mezzanine up above the office spaces. All of the utilities will be up there. The IT room, storage wall will be up above in that mezzanine. And then these are exterior elevations from the east and west sides of the building. This is the bulk water fill station. Again, if you've been to East Side Recycling, it'll look very similar to that. Try to tell you guys how we meet your strategic plan. So this falls into the economy part of the strategic plan to ensure appropriate infrastructure is in place for future business growth and development. The landfill is vitally important to the operation of our community and having a safe place for our staff to work and being able to maintain our equipment and being able to stay in service. I can't tell you what boost it will be. The operators have been waiting for this building. I've been here for coming on six years, a little over six years, and I've heard about this building since day one. So they're really, really excited about this, and so we're looking forward to giving them that opportunity to have a nice space for them to do their work in, invest in in them and invest in our community. $4,650,000 is coming from the landfill fund. We have sort of some tiers of dates here, so the bid opening coming next month and the award after that. We do have sort of early and late start dates to accommodate some flexibility with the contractor. Obviously, we want them to get in there and get going on it, but we we also don't want to discourage be so restrictive with the schedule that we would discourage somebody from bidding. So we sort of have an early and a late start date, and we have some different milestones. So if they can't get the certain things done by a certain time period, there will be some penalties for them, both in the fall and in the subsequent spring. But we won't be ready to occupy the building until spring of 2025. So. Shive Hattery did the work on this design, and we're really pleased to work with them. They had a wonderful staff. And and we changed our minds several times, and they they went with it and and did an excellent job, so. Questions for us?
Pretty sure I know the answer, but just confirming, this is exclusively for city staff. There's no Iowa City public function that would come into this space unless it was like a special event. Is that is that right?
We we would continue to have the space in the in the Scale House to host public events, to have people come and 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 hear about what we do at the landfill and to entertain the public, to meet with meet with other colleagues that we're working with, whether it be consultants or contractors, whatever. We we continue to use that space primarily for that in the Scale House. This would be for city staff. And will be controlled controlled access like our most of our buildings are.
You might have public wanting to come see it if you have a nice new big building, though.
I'm sure Jen Jen would love to host the next public public service, Public Works Service Week Open House. 2026 coming at you, so.
Excellent. Jen, thanks again. I got a chance to tour the facility out there last Friday, so thank you for hosting me. It is an impressive operation. One of the things I think that I had learned the other day that wasn't mentioned, but it might be useful to counsel to know is that this new facility will be allow the old facility doesn't have wide enough doors or tall enough doors to fit all of the equipment, so this will allow.
We got as wide and as tall a doors as the structural engineer would let us get. And we were pushing that envelope as much as we could, so yes.
And that plays a big role because not only does that leave equipment outside when it shortens the lifetime of lifespan of the equipment, but when they have to repair it, some of the repairs can't just be done in the dirt or they have to wait for weather. Being able to pull some of the equipment inside, if I'm remembering correctly, would save us time in terms of like having to actually ship equipment like big bulldozers and stuff on a tractor trailer up to some other city. So this this actually will have a couple of other cost-saving benefits, which if it was on the slides and I missed it, I apologize, but I thought that was I appreciate that because that also fits our strategic.
Sometimes staff is working on the equipment for two or three hours. So imagine if it's very cold or it's very hot or it's wet. You know, those those conditions, if you're outside, become pretty unbearable quickly. So having a space indoor that's controlled environment where we can do that work is going to make a huge difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel discussion.
Long overdue.
Yes.
I'm not sure we have a motion and second now.
Oh, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. All right, counsel discussion. I would say well deserved, well well needed, just for the morale of staff.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10C Fire Station One Apparatus Bay Slab Reconstruction Project. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Fire Station One Apparatus Bay Slab Reconstruction Project. Establishment amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome.
Good evening. This is the public hearing for the Fire Station Number One Apparatus Bay Slab Reconstruction Project. Not a terribly exciting project compared to that last one. So basically, all we're doing is repairing the front slab of Fire Station One, and we're going to add in a code required sand oil separator and then make a connection to the sanitary sewer. So those three things. Estimated cost is about $300,000. Our opening will be June 12th, with award June 18th, and then we'll start after start construction after the Fourth of July celebrations downtown and then hope to be open before school starts.
One thing that I would ask, and this is really just out of curiosity, I'm really curious how deep the hole is. Yeah, so as we're tearing that up, I would love to hear.
Yeah, yeah, we can. We'll measure that and get back to you.
We don't want that in the future. That should be the record.
Yeah, and we did. We actually did try to repair this with an epoxy, and it didn't hold very long. And it moves quite a bit right now when they drive the truck over it.
How does fire operations continue while this is under construction?
So we'll do we'll do it in two two phases, so we'll have one bay open at all times, and then they may have to park a truck somewhere around the corner. But yeah, the fire station will be open.
It's continuously operational throughout the entire process.
Feed the meter.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, seconded by Sala. And counsel discussion.
Yes.
Be done yesterday.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10D Fiscal Year 2025 Utility and Parking Rates, Public Hearing. This is an ordinance amending Title III Entitled Finances, Taxation, and Fees, Chapter Four Entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Move Sala.
Second, Harmsen.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
I was saying those parking rates, guys, that's all.
Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10E Adjusting Park Hours, Ordinance Amending Title X Entitled Public Ways and Property, Chapter Nine Entitled Parks and Recreation Regulations to Adjust Park Closure Hours. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and turn it over to our city manager.
Yeah, this one's quick. This is just adjusting the park hours at Chauncey Swan and College Green. This would have the parks close at midnight and then open up at dawn consistent with the opening times of other parks.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in public or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10F Bicycleists and Crosswalks and Using Sidewalks. Ordinance Amending Title IX Entitled Motor Vehicle in Traffic, Chapter One and Chapter Six to require drivers to yield right-of-way to bicyclists at crosswalks and to require bicyclists riding on sidewalks to obey pedestrian devices at signaled intersections. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved.
Second, Burgess.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Burgess, and we'll turn this over to our city manager again.
Yeah, again, a quick one here. This is in response to House File 2568 that was recently signed by the governors, by Governor Reynolds, excuse me. Requires the drivers yield to the right-of-way to bicyclists in the crosswalks. This is an ordinance that aligns our city code with this, and it also requires bicyclists riding on the sidewalk to obey pedestrian traffic control signals.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeff? Hearing none. Anyone from the public like to address this topic?
Actually, I do.
Oh, sorry.
So is there going to be some kind of, I don't know, signage that lets, I mean, you would hope that this is kind of self-explanatory, but like requiring drivers to yield right-of-way to bicyclists at crosswalks. Would there be signage that alerts them, or is just something that we should make sure everybody knows?
Yeah, I think it's more of a general public education effort. I think a lot of the a lot of the public hopefully, you know, would already be doing this. But this was actually a big win for the bicycle advocacy, something that they've been working for 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 many years. I think some general public education's a good idea, but I'm not sure that intersection signage at all the crosswalks is probably.
I mean, that would become costly, so, okay.
Just generally out of curiosity, and at an unmarked intersection, so like residential neighborhood, if somebody's bicycling on the sidewalk and they're going to cross a street from sidewalk to sidewalk, but go across the street, do they have to stop? Because it's not marked. Like, what is the, can they just shoot out? And I say that because I've seen that happen with some of the kids in my neighborhood. And, you know, obviously, it's on the driver to be careful, but is that even, I've seen older people do that too. I mean, seen adults do this as well.
This might be one of those classic right-of-way questions like.
Law school.
If you're talking to your children, like, well, you might have the right-of-way, but.
Don't be dead right.
Yes, exactly. You mentioned bicyclists as opposed to pedestrians. I don't make sure I hit your question right.
Yes, yes, bicyclists.
I think bicyclists probably need to, boy, I'd have to go back and look, counselor, but I think bicyclists need to defer, whereas the pedestrians, I think, do get the right-of-way in that circumstance, although, again, I would urge caution before they wander off. And you mentioned it, uncontrolled intersections, it's what.
Yeah, I mean, there's no traffic signal that, you know, would would then be covered by this ordinance. I just noticed that wasn't in the, you know, wasn't addressed specifically and just having observed like near misses there sometimes around Southeast Junior High and in that neighborhood, so.
Sure.
Does for both our ordinance and House File 2568, is there any distinction for things that are like bikes? You know, motor scooters and scooters and?
Right. So, I mean, the part of the definition of pedestrian conveyance here, which is what we're trying to track in the state code, does talk about things that it excludes bicycles to get to Counselor Harmsen's question, but it does include things that have a motor that is less than 750 watts. Those are considered pedestrian conveyances, and so those who are riding, let's say, kind of, I'll say razor-style scooter that has a motor on it, they that's a pedestrian conveyance and that counts, and so they would get the rights that are conveyed to pedestrians in this in this ordinance. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, our ordinance and the state covers it, but this University of Iowa might have slightly different rules.
Of course, with on on university property, that's they control. Well, much like we do, I mean, in the downtown district within the, you know.
Pet more plus.
We don't allow bikes on the sidewalk, period, and that would certainly be true of motorized scooters other than, you know, motorized wheelchairs and stuff like that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion there? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10G City Park Pool Selection of Conception Conceptual Design A Resolution Selecting City Park Pool Conceptual Design A and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into Agreement with the Williams Associates Architects, LTD, to Develop Plans, Specifications, Bidding, and Construction Services for the City Park Pool Replacement Project. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Sala, and welcome.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. I really hope we get a round of applause by the end of the night.
Yes.
All right, and here I have about 11 slides to just take you through the summary of the longer presentation you saw a few weeks ago. I'll just remind a few things and then go through the recommendation from staff. Project goals, you've seen these lots of times. Just reminder that the goals of the project is a multi-generational facility, generally within the fence line of the facility, cognizant of our climate action goals, cognizant of future lifeguards, and increased accessibility for everyone and welcoming from the time they get out of their cars all the way through the pool experience. We had the design considerations that were summarized after the first round of public input, and they're very similar. The one thing this adds was there was a strong desire to have avoid overlapping functions. So we heard this from all sorts of groups. We heard this from the teens when we met with them at Southeast Junior High. They love to play in the water. They hate to get yelled at by adults, so can they have some space to themselves? Lap swimmers like to have their space. Kids with families with kids like to have their space. So there is some real intentional things done here to try to separate uses within one large facility. Also, once again, preserving the history and the feel, open feel of the facility, the tree line, focusing on learn to swim, and once again, that multi-generational and safety. Notice lap swim didn't make the top of this list. You've heard a lot about lap swim. We've heard from a lot of other people as well, and this process had a huge outreach effort through all levels of input. We had online, we had in person, we tried very much for equity. Swimmers, non-swimmers, all areas of the community. swimmers, non-swimmers, all areas of the community, just a whole lot of effort to make it as fair and as informative for you as possible with 566 feedback touchpoints before we went into the concept design phase. And then the survey between the random survey and the open survey, 1,582 people participated in that. I only chose one slide from all the survey slides. You certainly had all of those at the last meeting, and those are all available online on the project site. But this is the interest level for the four concept designs. As you can see, that Concept A was by far the most popular. B is close thereafter with just separating the pools, but C and D not really receiving enough for us to move forward, considering those two. So Option A is the recommendation. However, remember, it is still a concept design. So there's still some things that I think need to be worked out as we move forward through full design. And some of those things are listed in the packet. We'll get to those in a second. One thing that staff wants to still look at is the separating of the three pools. So we do have a concept, the next one shows Concept A, but in the three pool design, so three separate pools. This gives us a lot more flexibility for operations and staffing. So we want to still have that as an, as possibly an option, but Option A is by far the preferred one, the going forward with the leisure pool area, the six lap lanes, the diving wall with a high dive and a low dive. You had asked at the last meeting about lifeguarding, so we have kind of a comparison chart. The current pool, we do this in three different scenarios. If we're open for just lapswim only, takes between two to four lifeguards to manage that. And the difference of that is with, you have three lapswimmers or you have 30, you know, so two to four. If we have light open swim, so beginning of season, end of season, it's 70 degrees out and kind of rainy, but we're still open, takes seven lifeguards to have the current pool open. And if we're busy, then it's 10 to 12. And that really depends on the weather. It depends on how many people are in the water. Option A is, we're recommending about the same number for lapswim, about the same number for light open swim, but it would take more. We hope that we have a busier pool once we, once we get through the new options. So we have 10 to 14. If you made that with an eight-lane, 50-meter lap lanes instead of six, you would essentially add two lifeguards to both the light and the busy timeframes. That's because it's a wider area. That makes the, it's too wide for the zone coverage of the lifeguard scenarios. And then if you're going to have three, the three separate pools in Option A, you actually have fewer lifeguards because you don't have the transition from the leisure pool into the main pool. That's one of the high areas where we need the most lifeguard eyes on the water. Without that area, with a break between those two pools, it takes fewer lifeguards. This is all with a lot of, this is our best guesstimate at this point. This was done with lifeguards who have guarded at a number of other pools and our staff. Lifeguard scenarios change. I don't think we're going to know the exact numbers on any pool until it's actually built and we're standing on the deck. But that's our best estimate at this point. Okay, let's talk a little bit about funding.
I'm going to jump in on this one. So this is a project that the cost estimate has kind of jumped considerably from master plan to concept design to where we're at now. Your current budget anticipates 10.8 million. And if you remember when we did the RFP, the language in the RFP asked for three concepts at around 10 million and one stretch one at 15. And when we started getting into developing the concepts, we realized that that budget was not going to deliver a pool that was going to be satisfactory to the public. So we made the decision as staff to proceed with what we felt could meet the community objectives, not wanting to sell Iowa City short for several decades to come. This is a, a long-term investment that we're making. So we definitely don't want to be, we don't want to make a decision that we're going to end up regretting down the road. That said, our intention from day one has to not incur debt, not incur significant debt for this project. The budget does include an anticipated $1.3 million debt issuance, which would be our, our limit for this, this kind of project. So largely a cash investment here. It is also utilizing the facilities reserve dollars. So we created the facilities reserve back in 2019. At that time, we were benefiting from some surpluses in our annual budget, and we were putting those surpluses aside for investment in city facilities such as this, not exclusively this, but such as this. We would have to, to reach this 18.39 million. We're going to have to look at nearly exhausting our entire facilities reserve. So over that years, over the years from 2019 to present, we were able to amass approximately $17 million for our facilities reserve. This would take largely all of that, but we would look also at doing some internal loans, which we've done for facility projects in the past. East Side Recycle Center, Harrison Street Deck, even the Streets Equipment Building, we've done some internal loans to allow those to happen. So what I'm delivering to you with this message is that the 18.39 is a stretch for us. We can make it work. We would tell you if we, if we really felt we needed to take a step back and delay things, and we would urge that we stay on schedule. But we also urge careful consideration of this preliminary cost estimate. And that's something that Julie and I are going to really have to work towards in that design phase. Once you get into the full design phase, there are going to be some unanticipated challenges. And there's some contingency built into that preliminary cost estimate, but we're going to have to make sure that we don't grow much beyond that. If we grow much beyond that, then my, my tune would change pretty quickly to where we can't make this as heavy a cash investment as we're planning right now. Again, I think we can at 18.39. It may mean some sacrifices or some alternative funding approaches to other facilities we had envisioned down the road. But in thinking through those, I think we can, I think we can come up with some alternative financing plans for, for those items. So happy to answer questions. The big thing for you to know right now is that this project is, is just under, at the preliminary cost number. We've got about an $8 million gap that we're going to have to cover.
Can you speak a little bit to the timeframe moving forward of design?
Yeah, two slides.
Perfect. I'll wait.
We'll get there. Okay. We do want to mention, there's still things that we'd like to still be figuring out as we move into design. And these are the, some, some of the things we'd like to still consider while staying under that budget. As I mentioned, the idea of detaching the leisure pool from the, from the lap lanes, going back to that idea of having separate functions, having if someone, if we have one of those mid-afternoon accidents in the pool, we don't have to shut the whole facility down. We can shut down one. We could heat one. There's just a lot more flexibility if we could separate the pools. Enhancing the 25-meter and/or the 50-meter. We don't have the 25-meter lap lane figured out yet. We have options, but I don't have a perfect answer for how people could swim 25 meters with a hard stop on each side. So we still want to, we still want to work on some options, see what we can come through on that. Want to look again, keep looking at that current channel as the kids' activity. We've had at least one commissioner with concerns about the safety of it. We'd like to look at that versus other kids' activities that maybe could be a part of that, that zero-depth area. And then adjusting the pool deck size, that's still a lot to be kind of shuffled around. So what you see in a concept design, things may move a little bit here and there to, to have less concrete, less cost with that, but that's still coming. Possibly some bathhouse or filter house modifications, and then placement and number of shade structures. Those are all things that I think are still to come as we move further into design. So next steps. So we would hope to move with some direction tonight to move into design from now through the end of this calendar year, get bidding in February and March of next year, and then construction during the summer of 2025 with an opening around Memorial Day on 2026, so two years from now opening. So the pool is filled right now, by the way. It's almost ready to open, not holding the water all, all that well.
Just leaving the co's in there overnight.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. So with that, I think we can answer any questions you have.
I, actually, Joshua, you wanted to.
I was curious about, in addition, this is what I wanted to see, and what the ideas that you have for any additional checkpoints with council before we get to the, the February 25 moment.
Yeah, I don't know that we have that mapped out yet.
I would say, you know, if all goes according to plan, there, there probably is not another checkpoint between now and when we present to you the bid docs. If the, the budget becomes a challenge, we'll have, we'll have a checkpoint with you. If we feel like we have to scale something back to meet that budget, we'll definitely have that checkpoint. We don't want to deliver anything less than what is shown in Concept A. We're hopeful that we'll deliver more. So that's probably not a satisfying answer, but it kind of depends on how that design phase goes.
Yeah. So this is kind of, I'm sorry, you.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, we will have, you know, because we are hearing from constituents at the same time that you are. I think that in, in reading the resolution, the sort of including but not limited to, seems to really take into account, like, these are the things we need to figure out and that we know the public is interested in, which I heartily applaud. Is there continued opportunity for us as we're hearing more from people about saying, yeah, don't forget about this? I mean, we don't, the last thing I want to do is micromanage, nor am I a designer, but at the same time, just to say, here's the resolution and then let us know what the final is. It feels like that's a, there's been so much input. Like, is there opportunities for us?
I think we've heard loud and clear the amount of input. We know that you've heard a lot about lap lanes. We know that that both 25 and 50 meter are important. We've also heard from, you know, the, the other people that are involved in this entire process, don't forget about kids and families. Don't forget about everyone else. So it's going to be a huge balancing act. But yeah, we've heard and we, we understand that there's a lot of constituencies in place. Our advocate group has been amazing, sticking through this whole process. We get that. I don't think there's a perfect answer, but we, we want to try our best to right-size this pool so it meets the most needs we can and lasts you for the next 50 years.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
I just wanted to say thank you throughout this process. It's not been an easy one for sure, whether that means, you know, the, the whole gathering of opinions process from the public or just, you know, the, the very public-facing, constant job this has been for you. I want to personally thank you for, you know, taking on that position and also just doing it really well. And, and being able to manage many differing interests and bring people together, I think, into something that's going to really be beneficial to the greatest number of people in our community. So I just really wanted to give you that, Julie. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I think I've told you this before, but I first got into Parks and Recreation because I was a 15-year-old lifeguard. And I came into the field through aquatics. This has been my first love. So the fact that we get to do a project of this size, I, I'm glad people are so interested and want to have so much say in it, but it's, it's going to be amazing if we can get this done.
Any other questions for Julie? Thank you. We're going to move to anyone from the public on this topic. Anyone want to talk about it? Please come up. And we'll ask that you state your name and city you're from.
I'm Mary Helen Stefaniac, and I live in Iowa City. I've lived in Iowa City for 42 years. So, and in all those 42 years, I and my family made use of City Park Pool. So I feel as though that gives you some kind of something, some kind of cred. I, you all recently, just a couple of days ago, got an email from me. I don't know if you've all had a chance to see it, but it's one of these, such as you're describing, Megan, where you're getting more, well, what about the 25-yard lap lanes? And that's indeed what my letter was about, if you recall. But I think it's, and I should have actually probably brought something to, to show, but the 25-yard lap lane is not in any of the designs. You know, it's not there. And I know that in the work session, it was like, well, what could we do? Could we divide it with a rope or some? Well, you can't really do that. And what, in my letter, I wanted to stress that the 25-yard lap lane is a part of the pool that is probably in the most constant use from 1:00 until the pool closes at 8:00 than any other part of the pool. The people who use it for fitness swimming, they're there even if the water is cold. And so there's someone there when the rest of the pool isn't looking very inviting to other people. But where it's most important is when families come with bigger kids and adults, and the kids are in the diving area or they're in the play area, the wonderful, I like the shape of the play area in the, in the Concept A. And where many of the parents, what they like to be able to do is just swim, you know, a couple of times across the pool, just swim, unobstructed. There is no place in any of the designs, except the old, original one, for that to happen. If you talk about not overlapping areas, people who come to, who would just like to be able to not just watch their kids and not just, you know, I'm not there just to lapswim for fitness, but just to be able to swim in the pool without bumping into the teenagers who don't want to be bumped into or told where to go. And I, there's a, there's a particular, if we haven't heard much from people about the short-course lanes, I think it might be that the families and other casual swimmers who buy a summer pass and regularly use City Park Pool can't imagine that the city would approve a pool design that leaves no place for them to actually swim unless they come to lapswim. And they're not, you know, they're not necessarily lapswimmers, or they're very casual lapswimmers. I wanted to mention one, oh, I'm almost out of time, so I can't. But I, I hope that if you pass the resolution, that you cut it off after Conceptual Design A.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? Welcome.
Hi. Well, Sharon DeGra, and I, I love the current City Park Pool and understand that it needs to change to some degree. And the numbers that went by, I would just say, notice how if the Design A is fully staffed, there's a significant increase in lifeguards, up to 15 compared to the design of the pool right now. And like Mary just said, I, I do agree, like, I use the pool not for lapswimming, but just to be in the pool, and I look for spaces not to be kicked by kids. And I see the Design A is going mostly in a, a little kid direction, and I don't know that I'll be lapswimming because I don't do that. It sounds like when I spoke to the, the person who was the designer, and this is back in February, he said that the beauty of this new design is that if we don't have staff, we'll just close down sections of the pool. But to me, that says, that's less pool. We get to see it, but we don't get to use it. And that's, that's sad. So I wish that some variant of D could come back. Perhaps if you have to extend out a wing of the, the shallow end, that would work. If you needed to slightly expand the, the catchall area of the swimming pool and take out a couple of trees that are over by the Gaga Ball pit area that I don't think gets used a lot, that would be okay. And the designer once again said, one or two of those trees are volunteer trees and not very valued. One thing that I wanted to ask about, and maybe Julie at some point will clarify it, is when there was information about the adult diaper changing station and wanting to increase usage of the pool by groups that don't usually get to use the pool, the purpose of an adult diaper is to save an accident for a minute or two, but that basically means if something goes wrong, that whole pool water has to be changed. So my question is, could something like D with a lot of flexibility for the general public and then another little expanded area for adult swimmers that maybe have different needs, could that happen off to the side? And if an accident happened there, that would just have a, a smaller catchall area. So save money on lifeguards, create a pool space that accommodates the majority of people going back to D, and then, and then have a smaller, well, expand the kiddie pool, but make it not as big as the shallow version that's in A. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one else, council discussion. Roll call, please.
I thought I was being polite. I heard nothing.
You think we're going to let this go without comment?
I mean, I heard nothing.
Yeah, really? Really? Are we good?
Wanted to say a thank you to members of the public who have spent a lot of their time and effort to shape this process to Julie, members of the staff of the Parks and Rec Commission and other city staff for all the work. I think this started right around the time we got on council, two years, or going, this is halfway through our third year. And so this is probably the first big project I've got to see from like very first level all the way to this point. Obviously, we're not done yet, so I don't want to like, you know, break out the champagne and whatever else, right? But anyway, I want to acknowledge from so many parties, the work that went into this and to get us this far. And, you know, I will be keeping my fingers crossed that the next design stage does actually address some of the things. And also for the budget stuff, I'll definitely be keeping fingers crossed, knocking on wood repeatedly and all that kind of good stuff, so.
I just have a question. When we're saying like the, we mentioned here the 25-meter and the 50-meter lap, we just think like Design A can be, we can implement that on it in the future, that like, it could be? And is that means we're going to come back to this, or?
No, we, we want to continue to look at other options. We've looked at some options where we could either add some space to the diving tank that doesn't appear to be the favorite option at this point, or ways, realizing that you'd have the three 50-meter lanes open all, all day long, is there a way that we can adjust those to 25 meters? There's still, we're just still trying to figure that out. There will be that quiet space, there will be that space available for lap swimming at all times when the pool is open. It's just, right now, it's 50 meters over shallow water. We have to determine if we can compromise to that or if there's some other way that we can make it happen crosswise or some other way. We're really knocking our heads against the wall trying to figure this out, but I give you the, give you our attention that we are trying to figure something out.
I don't know, but I still don't understand, is this, if we approve this tonight, is this means we're going to add the 25, or not?
Not necessarily. We're saying we need the time in the design, in the real design process, the full design process, to explore that. But we have budget constraints, absent, you know, alternative direction from you all. It could be that as we get into Option A, it wouldn't be unheard of, especially in the last few years, that it's 20% more than the preliminary cost opinion just to build what was there. And that's going to be a real challenge for us. So I'm really hesitant to say that, yes, we're going to make accommodations and be able to add, you know, two more 50 meters or 25-meter lanes. I'm hesitant to say that right now because we just won't have a more refined estimate until we're into the detailed design phase. If it's a must for you, then by all means, tell us now. If you tell us, we have to have 25-meter fixed lanes, then we'll go at it and we may have to come back to you with an alternative financing strategy. Hope not, but we may have to. As it stands right now, you would, you'd be approving Option A, and what we're, what we're trying to say with the way the resolution's worded is, we're going to look for ways to enhance both 50 and 25 meter. We're hopeful that we can do that. We can't guarantee it. What we're saying is we won't, we won't pull back, right? We're not going to present you with a plan that has four 50-meter lap lanes going forward. We're going to stick to that, the six as shown, and hopefully enhance it, but we can't make, can't make that guarantee until we're into the design.
And once again, to be clear, the current design would have three lap lanes available, we think, at all times except during swimming lessons. And those are three lap lanes over shallow water at the side of the pool away from the other activities. What it doesn't offer is that touch point at the halfway point to turn around and go back, but you're in shallow water, not deep water like you were in the old pool. It's not perfect, but it is, for that experience you talk about all day with being able to swim and be at the pool when everyone else is there with the families, that will be there. It's just going to be in the longer option, not the 25-meter option. We know that's not perfect, but just to be really clear, we think the experience will be there in a different format.
I just believe that we, we are not doing this pool like every few years. This is going to be last for like long time, and we don't want to change it, so if there is any way we can do it right now, our also community is growing and more people will start using this pool. And I just heard from a lot of residents, the 25 lap is really important to them. And I feel like if we, if there is any way we can just, you know, figure out money for, I know the money is tight, and, but if we can figure out something for that, because we would like to have something really going to last forever and it will accommodate everyone.
I completely understand that you've had a lot of outreach on the lap lanes. I would just remind you that the rest of the public input process that we had did not highlight that nearly as much as what you're hearing in the one-on-one conversations. It's of all things important. We also don't want to forget about families and kids and their space too. And I really urge you to think about, we need to right-size this pool so it's under a budget we can get done. It's something that we can operate into the future, that we can lifeguard into the future. There's some trade-offs with doing that, but I think we're at a point where this is probably the right size and we'll, we'll make it work for whatever happens in the future. There's flexibility to the way it's designed. It's not, it's not going to meet everyone's exact stated wants, but I think it's going to give the experiences that most people are looking for when they come to this outdoor pool.
I do think it's been extraordinary to think of where we started and seeing a sea of people, you know, very, very passionate and in many cases, very unhappy about what, you know, may or may not happen. And to be here tonight and seeing how close and how much input is actually reflected in the concept is really amazing. And I hear the people loud and clear also about the desire for 25, but I also remember from the presentation that within the existing A, there are options for 25, some version of it perhaps. So I guess I would just encourage you to keep looking. But I'm mindful of the fact of like, if we keep going at perfect, we're going to blow the budget up and it's going to take forever because then we're going to want to, we're going to want to have our hands in it. And I think at a certain point, we've done absolutely everything that has been done in, in the right way and in an inclusive and very, very deliberate way to get as close to something for everyone, and I think that this is a really good representation of it.
Was it how much it cost X ray if we add the 25?
We don't have an actual number on that. We know that to add the two 50-meters was more around 800 to a million. So probably in that same ballpark, just depending on, that's, we don't have those kind of answers for you tonight, though.
I wanted to just say thanks to all of those, to the staff and to the public for coming and weighing in on, in so many ways on this item. Happy to be here at this point tonight. The Design A is the one that is, you know, through the, is the most favored, and I do trust that the staff is right here, you know, a part of the language, you know, that you're going to look at other opportunities that had, that you just mentioned. So I'm comfortable moving forward with this tonight.
Yeah, I like Design A too, as like a lot of people, even the public said, you know, they agree for Design A. It is nice, but I hope, you know, the staff will figure out something for the 25 lap. And we are really, we, our financial is very good, we're AAA, like, for the one, we can figure out something. And I trust the staff that they can find something.
Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We're at item number 11, council appointments. 11A is Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I think we're going to just go one by one with these. All right?
Zach Palmer.
So we have one non-gender balance requirement. I want to mention again that Selena Martin did move out of the community, so that is not an option for us.
I think Kayla Rossi. Is that her name? Kayla?
Kayla.
I could support either.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like we got the majority for Kayla Rossi. Okay, can I get a motion to appoint Kayla Rossi to the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Dunn, seconded by Sala. Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. 11B is Airport Commission, and this is one vacancy to fill, a four-year term, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2028.
The one applicant?
I think Elektra's great.
I would just notice in there is late correspondence.
The Oral Commission, there is.
Included, but.
This one?
Yes.
Yes. So can I get a motion to, are people, what are people thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a letter supporting that applicant, so yeah.
Yes. All right. So can I get a motion to appoint?
Elektra.
Elektra Orzanco?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Seconded by?
Burgess.
Burgess, okay. Sometimes I don't know who it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. 11C is Community Police Review Board. This is two vacancies to fill, four terms, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2028, and this is 11C. That's the item that we're discussing. There is two vacancies, so one male required and then one none.
Franz.
And Colette Atkins.
Agreed.
If I can interject, I'll make the same comment I made last time there was an opening for which Mr. Becker was available as an applicant. He's a public defender, and I continue to be concerned whether he would feel torn between the confidentiality that he needs to follow as part of the CPRB in terms of seeing videos and so forth that are not generally available to the public and his duties to zealously advocate for his criminal defendant clients. I don't think it's disqualifying, I just want to raise that as a concern.
And I think that attorney would have ethical obligations to recuse himself to avoid any conflict of interest. And as I mentioned last time, there was an attorney who was a defense attorney who worked in my office, who was the chair of the CPRB. So I don't think there's any problem with having a person who's positioned that way.
I guess my response would be, I'm not sure which attorney you're mentioning, but.
David Selmer.
Sorry?
David Selmer.
Yeah. Someone with the Public Defender's Office, of course, does nothing but criminal defense, and I'm not sure how they would recuse in the sense of, you know, if they were to recuse from any time they're going to watch a video of a police officer, that doesn't leave a lot of work for them to do.
No, but it would be if it was a conflict relating to a case that they had, which I heard is your concern.
Oh, yeah, that's true, but of course, the problem would be you'd be watching a video and you'd see some officers and so forth, and even if you don't have a case, I mean, certainly you're right, if they had a, if the video was related to a current case, that would be easy, they would clearly need to recuse. My concern is broader than that. That is that they would watch a video of an officer and so forth, and they have no case with that officer right now, but, you know, six months from now, they do. And they've now seen a video of that officer from a case that is not theirs, but which they may wish to use as impeachment on the case that is theirs.
Wouldn't they have to disclose that?
Sorry?
Wouldn't they have to disclose that?
Would who have to disclose that?
The attorney, or Franz?
I'm not sure, I can't think of any ethical rule that they would require them to disclose that they had seen that video. And it just in a situation, that hypothetical situation, it just seems that that would put Mr. Becker in a difficult situation. He's made a promise to the CPRB to maintain confidence in those videos that he's seen, yet of course has a, you know, very serious ethical obligation to zealously advocate for his client. Where does he come down?
There are also very strong evidentiary rules relating to the kinds of evidence that can or cannot be used, that would, that would implicate an officer's prior conduct or their, you know, participation in any other incident. We have those rules in place.
Sure. You're right. My concern would be that, let's say he was going through either a cross-examination or a deposition of an officer, he feels that the officer did not answer honestly based on a video that Mr. Becker had seen. What then?
We have on the floor two people that's been.
I would also add, I would add Dave Schwint to that.
Okay.
I think we have three.
Yep, so we have two males that's been nominated as well as Colette, which, you know, I guess is one male required and then one none. You know, I guess personally, I would throw my support behind Colette and David.
I'd go with this.
Franz and Colette are where my, where my vote's going to go.
Yeah, I guess, this feels like it's two parts of a coin since Dave Schwint worked for the ICPD for 22 years, and I know that we've had that and I continue to have that sort of like, oh, someone who's retired, but I think within the first couple of meetings that we had, we had to deal with this, and ultimately, I couldn't go there, so I will not, as much as I actually respect Dave Schwint, I won't.
For me, I think the, I agree with you because that gives me pause as well, and we did have that discussion right soon after we started. But one of the things we, as a council, decided was there had to be a period of time, and it's also one of those, giving these three candidates, I think, I also agree with Colette, so I think that's probably going to be a consensus. But between Mr. Becker and Mr. Schwint, Mr. Schwint isn't currently still with the Police Department where Mr. Becker is still a public defender, and so, you know, who's going to walk into a job? And I think raising these, just the very fact that we have two candidates that would allow for us not to have to have anybody, you know, question, have to remove, recuse themselves on a, on who knows how often of a basis, like, we would know that out of the gate, that that would be an ongoing issue. I don't think, and that also said, I'm also aware of, from other members of the council, of Mr. Former Officer Schwint's reputation as being very fair-minded, being somebody who has done a lot of good work in terms of the data. And so that also weighs into my, into my decision-making process. And weighing those two things out, I agree, Meghan, that was something I had to, had to give some real thought to, but I think I still came down with the Colette and Mr. Schwint, Ms. Atkins and Mr. Schwint.
I guess I can support Colette, but I'm.
Were you throwing your support behind Franz?
I am not sure.
Okay, all right. Yep, no worries. Just wanted to see where other people are. We do have four for Colette already.
Yeah.
David, okay, so we got, so far we have three for David, two for Franz, and then four for Colette.
And I would support Schwint and, Mr. Schwint and Ms. Atkins.
Okay. So could I get a motion to appoint Colette Atkins and David Schwint to the Community Police Review Board?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second, Harmson.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I think I have three nays. Okay. Um, so motion passes four to three. Would you, I, I wonder if I should have broke that out by male and nun, but.
I don't think we have one.
We did it.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we are on to 11D. So 11D, 11E, and 11F. I think I'll do those all at one. Well, no, we'll just do it. 11D, yeah.
If, if, sorry, if I may, Your Honor, it might be helpful to do them as a group only because if you do them one by one, you might be limited in the first one, let's say, uh, because of the present composition of four males and three, uh, I'm sorry, four females and three males. Uh, this is, uh, one of the boards of commissions that's required by state law and thus until July 1st, we need to have gender bounds.
Well, do you still have a gender balance?
We do need to have gender bounds, uh, until July 1st on this board.
So I, the, the.
For this commission.
First thing that I want to comment on, I'd like to defer consideration for the first historic preservation to our second meeting in June, our second meeting in June?
Is this really, I don't know.
For all three?
No, just for the first one.
The College Green.
The College Green one.
Oh, okay, got it.
I just have a general question. When we defer, are we then, uh, keeping the application period open until, like, the packet time for the meeting immediately prior? Is that the intention?
That would be what I want.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's what.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes.
And is there a reason why we're deferring? Since we want to be a little transparent to the public?
Yeah. Um, I would just like to see other candidates aside from just the one person. And I know that the other, the person has had some interesting interactions with the city in the past relating to historic preservation. So I want an opportunity to talk with them, um, and learn a little bit more about their interest, um, and see if other people are interested as well.
But don't we have another one that have only one person apply and we move forward with it?
Mm-hmm. I'm just saying that I'm not comfortable with the candidate right now.
But that's why we vote.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess my, my question would be, is there anyone else, I mean, is there anyone else that wants to defer this?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Good thing, yeah. And, and I certainly think allowing for more applicants is a good thing when we have just one or a small number.
Okay. So could I get a motion to, it sounds like, um, uh, you need to make a motion to defer Dunn?
So moved.
No second.
Move by Dunn, second by Mo. Um, all in favor say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 11E, uh, we'll go there. That's the Historic Preservation Commission. East College Street, this is one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027. And there is only, uh, one person, um, and that's Ryan Russell.
Should we just defer all three?
Yeah, we can defer them all.
Yeah.
You want to defer them all?
Yeah.
11E and 11F as well.
Okay.
Because that would still, we'd still appoint before the current term is up.
Well, 11F has three applicants.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I was just thinking about the gender balance comment that.
Oh.
Our attorney made, that maybe we want to consider them all together.
Yeah, there's.
But they also have to live, I mean, the at-large is probably not problematic.
Right.
Because they have to live in certain communities.
I think we can take care of the at-large one.
There's two women and one.
Okay, so is there a motion to defer, um?
East College?
Yes.
I'd defer 11E.
Okay. And this deferment will be, uh, so moved by Burgess, second by Alter. This deferment will be until June 18th. Row, um, all in favor say aye of the deferment?
Aye.
Any, um, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 11F is Historic Preservation Commission at-large. And there is, um, no, uh, gender balance requirement for this one?
Margaret, the archaeologist, like to, I mean, that is a pretty cool skill set that not very many historic preservation, uh, commissioners get to have. Am I thinking of the wrong?
No, that's all right.
No.
How, how long has she been on the commission?
So she's served one full term. Um, I, I think she's, you know, I think she's great. She's done a great job. I would also put out there Gabriel, um, because we don't have, you know, on the historic preservation, any category that would require, um, a contractor or anyone that does this, um, I guess, work to buildings. And so that's where I found Gabriel, uh, to be of interest.
Oh, interesting.
Because they do work on historic preservation properties. And I think, at this moment in time, that could be very helpful.
We, we do have contractors on the commission, but I, I still think.
Yes.
The applicant looks great, too.
Thank you.
Oh.
Heard stuff.
Happy to know.
Glad we didn't feel it.
Mayor, the one comment I wanted to make about, uh, gender balance here is that, again, with a present composition of four females and three males, I, I think that because the term does not begin until July 1st, it's probably okay for you to appoint a, a female now.
Sure.
But understand that your hands would really be tied for the subsequent appointments, and you would need to appoint at least one male so that you were.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
I could go back and forth between the two of them, honestly, Margaret and, um, Gabriel. I could go either way.
They'd both be great applicants. I just, archaeology is such a specialized thing. Why I was attracted to that, because that is part of the umbrella of historic preservation.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think in that way I go a little bit more, um, for Margaret, but I can be happy with anyone.
So, so Dunn is up at Margaret. We have Josh at Margaret, Bruce at Gabriel. Any other? Okay, Alter at Gabriel.
I'd say Margaret.
Okay. Um, Burgess at Margaret.
I could go with Margaret as well. They're both great.
Yeah.
Harmson. All right, could I get a motion to appoint Margaret Beck?
So moved.
To, um, the historic preservation commission at large.
Second.
Move by Dunn, second by Alter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 11G. This is Housing and Community Development Commission. Three vacancies to fill, a three-year term, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Um, so because this will happen on July 1st, Eric, do we have to go with the one male, one female, one nun?
Well, that's a good question. Of course, at, at present, uh, that law is in effect. The appointment, of course, will be after it is no longer in effect. I, I think that since you're making the appointment tonight, you need to continue to comply with the law as it is present.
Okay.
So I will say about this one, we're doing, uh, housing and community development, right? Um, I've been reached out to by friends of Caleb Banning, um, and apparently he, oh, wait. Never mind, ignore me right now.
I, I would like to suggest to avoid Daouda, Baldi, and George.
So, so there's a, a motion to appoint, um, Daouda, Baldi, and George Kavarkis?
I would support, um, oh, wait, no, this is something.
We already appointed Colette to something else.
Yes, um, okay. I would actually request a deferral on this to our next meeting.
Oh, sorry.
And the only reason for that is because I, I got confused in my head. That's what I started to talk about. Um, Caleb Banning is interested in continuing his term, and he mistakenly did not get his application in. Um, so if people would entertain a deferral, that would be my appreciation. I just, I don't know him personally, um, but that was just a request that I received from folks.
Yeah, the only thing I will say is that this has been announced.
Mm-hmm.
Good times.
For a long time. You know, I, I.
I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, and then the other thing is, you know, people that have served a full term, you know, oftentimes we don't, um, we allow other people to have other opportunities. So.
Sure.
I, I hear, I, you know, I think Caleb does a great job. I like Caleb. I do know Caleb, but, um, I would not feel comfortable.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Allaying for him missing his application date.
No problem. I could also support Daouda.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any, uh, I could support Daouda or, or, or George is fine. Um, for the, there's just three appointments. I, I would, um, I would be leaning towards either Carol Creutz or Becky Reedus for the third appointment. Um, between those two would be the, my next.
Becky works for Community?
No.
No.
She used to.
She's retired. She's been retired for some time.
Okay.
This would be her second term.
Those are the two that I would entertain either of those.
And I think it's, um, Carol, um.
Is it Creutz?
She had been appointed to finish a term. I don't think that she has.
That was gonna be my question, as if any of.
So I, I would support Carol.
I would agree.
On that.
Yeah, she didn't even finish her term, right?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, I would support Carol as well.
And.
What, can somebody tell me about ethnicity, like assurance means?
Assyrian?
Assyrians means, what that means?
Assyrian?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. I mean, Syria, right? Syria? Wait, where are we looking at this? Which person? Oh, Syria's starting to talk, nope. You got me this time, Mayor.
That's George.
George?
Yes.
Okay, give me one second.
So I can support, uh, Carol. George, I, I, I did, I mean, there's other people that I would support here. I think, you know, when we're talking, you know, there's, there's applicants and giving other people opportunities to serve. Um, so I would do George, Carol. And I, I'm okay with, um, Baldi as well.
Mayor Protem, uh, I, I looked it up for you, uh, because I didn't know either. It's an ethnic group, uh, predominantly from Iran, Iraq, Syria, and Turkey.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just like really always think about diversity. That's why I'm saying those two people, George and, uh, Daouda. And I'm fine with Carol to, to continue her term. But that, right now, we don't have any, like, diversity on that.
True. Um, in his own answer, he's, he's working with an local, a local nonprofit, and he just said that this is a potential co- conflict of interest. I mean.
Oh, shoot, shoot, I missed that.
He's.
George?
He said, "I am currently employed with a local nonprofit, Wanpo, World's Okayest Nonprofit Organization that utilizes donated and raised funds to invest in a variety of care and resources for veterans struggling with their mental health." This is the only potential conflict of interest I have to report.
To be clear, under.
This is not, like, really a conflict.
Yeah.
Under 362.5, that nonprofit would be ineligible if he's appointed.
Okay, so.
Oh.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I just wanted, I'm just reading from his own application.
Yeah, right.
And, and it's, you know, just something to be aware.
I mean, we could still appoint him and make sure he knows that and he could decide for himself. And then worse comes to worse, we'd have one more appointment to make if he decides.
True, although I, I will say that, um, yeah, I mean, I think it'll end up being a non-issue. Um, however, if this were to come up, he would have to recuse himself from the entire batch of funding. He can't just take himself off. So that's.
If I may, it's not just recusal, it would, he would.
I mean, he's, he's not.
He couldn't get it.
He can't do any business with it.
Yes, yeah.
And who are you referring to?
George.
Yeah, so.
I had to present.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think we have other opportunities here.
But we, we, we being saying some commissioner recues themselves sometime, if they, we don't know for now, is this organization going to.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it wasn't an issue. I mean, it's a veterans' organization.
Yes, and they are not eligible to apply for the city.
Nonprofit in Tiffin.
Yes.
But if they apply for funds.
No, we don't do that.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that I know that he would be applying. I have no idea.
No, 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 do I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't bother me personally, sorry.
I mean, like, the nonprofit organization is not in Iowa City and they are not eligible. So, uh, he has to tell us that. So, but it is really not conflict.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Wanted to, um, hear other nominations or people to throw support behind, uh, names that have been already spoken.
Who's on your list? I'm sorry, I'm.
George, I said George.
So.
The, the, yeah.
Yep.
Two people.
I have, uh, Dawabi, Baldi, for, with Dunn and Maz.
Daouda.
Or I'll just say two people.
And color.
Or maybe.
Yeah, and I got Carol, too.
Yes. And then George Kavarkis is Harmson, Maz, and, uh, Teague.
And me.
And Dunn, so that is full. Um, and then we have Carol Kreutz with four already.
Yep.
Uh, cause it's Harmson, Alter, Dunn, Sala, and Teague.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just down to one more appointee. And then there is Becky Reedus with Harmson.
We said Daouda.
I said Daouda.
Yeah, I did mention Dunn and Maz. Oh, and I did throw my name there. So it was, it was three behind Daouda, Baldi.
You can add my name to, uh, Mr. Baldi, Kavarkis, and Kreutz.
Cool.
And Ms. Kreutz.
All right, could I get a motion to appoint? To the Housing and Community Development Commission, um, Baldi.
Baldi.
Dadi, Bla- Baldi?
Yeah.
George Kavarkis and Carol Kreutz.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so I'll give it to Alter.
Yeah.
She's sitting next to me. And, uh, so moved by Alter, second by Sala. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 12, announcements of vacancies new. And we have 12A, Plant and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2026. And applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Move.
Second.
All right, move by Sala, second by Alter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item 13 is announcements of vacancies previous. 13A, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Willan Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. And vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 14 is city council information.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just wanted to let the, uh, council and the public know that, um, Iowa City City High's state champion jazz band will be performing this Friday night on the Ped Mall during the Friday Night Music Series.
Nice.
Um, they, uh, they are coming away from a, a state win. Um, they also have, and because I'm also a percussionist, I should mention that their, um, their drummer, James Cardos, what, is like a statewide top jazz drummer. And, uh, for those of you that are into jazz music, this is probably a, a kid that will see his name in the future. So if you're, if you're a music lover, you might want to say, "I saw this guy what, once went back when."
Yes.
Uh, would be worth going. That's, um, I think the concert series, I think the performances all start at 6:30. Um, I think the Iowa City Band might not, might not take the stage until about 7:45. So, uh, it's gonna be a great, great show. They're, they're, I've heard them play before. They are phenomenal. You wouldn't know they were high school kids if you didn't know. Nobody told you.
Yes, awesome.[1778.04]
Just wanted to say, big, big thanks. I know they're all gone, but to the Public Works people who were at the wastewater treatment plan on Saturday, the event was a huge success. And the kids giggling and screaming at all of the jokes and the things was just really wonderful to see. And the kids loved it. Like, and the staff just did a wonderful job engaging everybody. So thanks to City for organizing that event.
I just want to say yet another hearty and heartfelt thanks, love and gratitude to Angie Jordan, who is the recently resigned director of South of Six. Just the work that she has done to make that area and beyond known is incredible. And I just, I love her to death. And I just, I wish her all the best. And just so much gratitude. Yeah.
The work she's done and how she's done it, I think.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Model in amazingness.
Here, here.
All right. We're going to move on to our city, item number 15, report from our city staffs, city manager's office.
Just a quick observation. You think of boxes that are, that are kind of checked along the way. Historic preservation, road repairs, better staff facilities, new pool. You guys did a lot today. That's just, that's just a sampling. So good work. We still have some work session left to do. I'll leave it at that.
Yes. All right. City attorney.
I do have one. One of the attorneys in our office, Sarah Hectone, who's been with us for 17 years, has announced her resignation slash retirement. She wants to spend more time with her kids. That time is well deserved. And we will miss her dearly. She has generously agreed to stay on until June, the end of June, so as to try to minimize the amount of time that I am without her expert services. Applications are due by May 31. Spread the word.
Awesome. Great. Our city acting city clerk.
Nothing to update.
All right. Could I, item number 16, could I, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now, before we take a break, I do want to maybe jump back into our work session, only because I want to do a deferment after we allow USG.
Okay.
Is that okay? I am very cognizant that we've been here since 3:30. Okay? All right. So it is May 21, 2024. We are returning back to our work session for the city of Iowa City. I do want to make a motion, well, I do want to defer items three, four, five, six, and seven. And then if, if people are okay with that, I will just make that deferment. Okay? And we're going to move on to item number eight, which is the University of Iowa Student Government with their updates. Welcome, and you're still bright-eyed.
Thank you.
I had a lazy summer. I roll out of bed at 12.
Okay.
Oh, well played.
Woo-hoo. Well deserved.
I'm still taking a summer class, so I didn't, I didn't get off the hook. Anyways, hi, everyone. I hope you're all well. Renters Guide survey has been released to the university's students through mass email. This survey does go to undergraduates, graduates, international students alike. So we collect different demographics on that. I plan on being a little more expeditious with the data analysis to hopefully present it by November and not during first semester finals week. Our threshold is hopefully about 600 responses, and we redesigned the survey to take on-campus participants to the end of the survey upon choosing that option, so that we hopefully do not have to omit so many observations from the later data. Platform committee information will be sent out by our leadership soon. This is a temporary selective committee that works in depth to form our official platform for the administration. My goal is for Ava or I to hopefully apply and then be selected for the committee. So that way, once I have my meeting with Jeff, hopefully I can work to include more of the citywide legislative initiatives into our official platforms. That's kind of my, my route going into that. The USG textbook drive has wrapped up. This drive was reignited by our former Director of Academic Affairs and has continued with our current one. The drive allows students to donate books that they do not have to return to USG where we catalog them and offer them to students based on our inventory. The lease gap application will be pushed out on June 3. Lease gap is a program where USG helps to subsidize rooms in the Iowa House Hotel for about a week during the summer when students will be in the transition period between leases, which helps to alleviate the pressure of finding a place to stay in Iowa City for one week. We obtained 30 rooms that will be available from July 28 to August 3 of this year, along with free parking available at Hancher Auditorium. Due to renovations of the IMU, the House Hotel will not be retained in the building. So one of the upcoming projects for the liaisons this year is to find a different stakeholder or city partner to be able to continue the program. And then also, I recently discovered Deluxe Bakery, and it has fully changed my.
Oh, nice.
Recently. I don't know how I've been here for two years and I didn't discover it, but one-on-ones are not happening yet. But when they do start, I'm opening, I'm open to proposing that as a location for any one of us. So first come, first served. Or if we all want to do it at Deluxe, I'm totally okay with that, because I've been there twice within the past three days. So, yeah. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Amazing on the hotel.
All right. Item number nine is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Hearing none. We're adjourned. And you sat through all of that.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.